All right. Hello. Good evening. Welcome to this December 21st regular meeting of your West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calabano.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we can remain standing just for a second, we're going to do a short moment of silence. We had some sad news today that a, one of our employees, an administrative assistant at the transportation department, Gail McCullough passed yesterday. So you know, our thoughts are with Gail and her family. And if we could just have a moment of silence for them. All right. Thank you. May I have a motion for consideration of the closed in public meeting minutes of December 7th and 15th?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, Mr. Calabano.
Yes.
Mr. Woodstein?
Yes.
Ms. Toni Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right. Next up, student liaison report. Ms. Celestin and Ms. Ridley, take it away.
Um, we actually don't have anything for our report today, but happy holidays and have a great new year, everybody.
All right. Thank you. You as well. Dr. C.
Thank you, Mr. Alper, and good evening, everyone. Members of the board and community, colleagues and faculty and staff that are joining us this evening. Before we get started, I just want to take this opportunity to wish everyone in our school community, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and a, we're hoping for a happy and very healthy new year and smoother waters ahead of us in 2021. You know, a couple of auspicious kind of notes of this meeting, which you know, we'll, we'll discuss a little bit more in detail later. And I don't want to steal too much of the thunder, but I'll start off by just saying this is a couple of last tonight. We have our business administrator, Mr. Calabano, who's been with the district for six years, will be retiring. At the end of this month, this will be his last board meeting, presiding as business administrator. So we'll have some words for him later, but Mr. Calabano, thank you, sir, and best of luck to you in your retirement. And obviously later on in the superintendent's report, we will acknowledge the tonight's last board meeting for board president, Mr. Alper. And so I know we'll have board, we'll have some words for Mr. Alper and some recognitions for him as well. But I'd just like to personally thank Mr. Alper for his leadership over the course of the last two years, challenging two years. I'd like to thank him as a board president of the board that, that hired me as the superintendent for, for his confidence in, in supporting that. And I can say that just working with him and this board for the last some, two some odd years, that I feel that the district has made a lot of progress and that we're in, we're in a good place and the board is in a good place. And I think that has a lot to do with Mr. Alper's leadership. So thank you, Mr. Alper, and wish you best of luck as you step down after this, your last board meeting. So thank you, sir. Let's give you a little applause there. You'll get some more words of, of thanks as we move on later in the agenda. But we have a really, a really good agenda, a really good superintendent's report for you tonight. My favorite thing to do, which is really to recognize the achievements of staff, the achievements of students. And a great way to kick that off is with honoring our, this year's governor's educator of the year awards for teachers and for educational support personnel. This is a, an award that I, I don't know how many years it's been since we've done it here in West Orange, but it's been a few. So I want to commend and introduce our executive director personnel, Dr. Vesbignani, who was very intent in his efforts to get this, this award up and running again in West Orange. And so looking forward to recognizing these outstanding educators tonight. So Dr. Vesbignani, take it away.
Thanks, Dr. Cascon, and thank you to the board for the opportunity to recognize our governor's educator of the year recipients. Just very briefly, a little bit about this annual program essentially allows for each school within a district to select one teacher and one educational services professional of the year. Examples of educational services professionals would include child study team members, school counselors, reading specialists, or nurse, for example. There are certain eligibility criteria that must be met to nominate and select these recipients. So essentially the nomination and selection process opened in mid-September and closed on November 20th. Schools and form panels to use the state's nomination form scoring guide to score each eligible nomination that was submitted. Principals announced the recipients internally on Friday, December 11th. And we're really excited to recognize and, and celebrate these individuals tonight. We'll have each principal introduce the recipients and share just a few words as to why they were selected. Please note that all schools do have a teacher of the year, but in some cases, an educational services professional was not nominated. All teachers of the year are now eligible to apply to be selected as the county teacher of the year, which is the next phase of the process. And that process will close on January 22nd. So we wish all of the teachers of the year who are being recognized this evening, the very best in the process to potentially be selected as county teacher of the year.
Great.
So I will begin by inviting our principal of our youngest learners at Betty Madalena Early Learning Center. If Ms. Salamino can join us and present her recipients.
Good evening and thank you, Dr. Vesbignani. I'm going to begin with our nominee for teacher of the year. It is my honor and privilege to present Ms. Lauren Kenny as the BMELC teacher of the year. Ms. Kenny has been an outstanding member of the team at the Betty Madalena Early Learning Center since her first day in 2017. She's known for her knowledge of our Tools of the Mind curriculum, including how to scaffold it up and down for our various learners. But Ms. Kenny shares her knowledge individually, at team meetings, and with families. She is one of our guiding teachers for data collection and review. Ms. Kenny has also participated in two district-wide demo slam competitions and has won first place in both. We are very proud of her. Additionally, Ms. Kenny has presented the benefits of using technology in the classroom and collaborated with the ESL supervisor to present how to support English language learners at the preschool level. She is also the technology specialist for BMELC and has led the transition to hybrid and remote learning in the planning, implementation, and professional development, and quite a job that has been. Within the classroom, Ms. Kenny is also a leader. She is able to plan and implement highly effective lessons, which are designed to support and stretch her learners, both academically and socially emotionally. She has demonstrated the ability to captivate and create motivating learning centers, utilize technology, and different resources to engage her students and to differentiate instruction to ensure student success. She also designs remote instruction Google activities, which are engaging and rigorous. Additionally, Ms. Kenny has facilitated training with her classroom paraprofessionals to create a skilled team who collectively and collaboratively work to ensure student learning. This is evidence both within the classroom and in the remote learning breakout groups. Ms. Kenny is highly sensitive to her family's current needs and works seamlessly to engage them in their child's development and learning. She has excellent interpersonal skills, which allow her to create meaningful relationships with students, faculty, and parents. I couldn't be any prouder of Ms. Kenny. Thank you, Lauren. Next, it is my honor and privilege to announce Ms. Linda Connolly Shoner as the BMELC educator support person of the year. Ms. Connolly Shoner has been a member of the BMELC team since 2017. Working as a school nurse at the preschool level presents challenges not necessarily seen at other levels in schools. At BMELC, our students run the gamut of abilities and challenges. As such, it is critically important that rapport and relationships are established with all students when the building's healthcare professional. But it is equally important for the school nurse to establish rapport and communication with families and staff. Ms. Connolly Shoner, or Nurse Linda, as she is known to the BMELC community, exemplifies the characteristics of a preschool nurse. She relates to students on their level, even showing favorite videos or reading favorite stories when they are in her care. She is visible daily in the classrooms and at arrival and dismissal, and communicates consistently with staff and families. Given that our students cannot relay information home themselves, whether in how they feel or what has occurred during the course of a school day, Ms. Connolly Shoner's knowledge of a student's normal behavior has enabled her to effectively monitor student health. She also communicates this information to families. You will hear her begin a message or a conversation with, this is Nurse Linda from the Betty Madalina Learning Center. X is fine, but I want you to know, and she goes on. Families frequently express their appreciation for her consistent and caring communication. With this current COVID-19 pandemic, Ms. Connolly Shoner has become a resource to the school community. She reports to her daily when school is in session and maintains active communications with all stakeholders. She is also a member of the school's pandemic response team. Ms. Connolly Shoner ensures that she is up to date with all CDC guidelines regarding schools. She keeps current with her professional development so as to use best practices in healthcare in her professional responsibilities. Our offices adjoin each other, and I can see just her incredible work ethic that she displays every day. So Linda, congratulations.
Very well. Thank you, Ms. Salamino. Congratulations to our Betty Madalena recipients. Up next, I'd like to invite our principal of Gregory Elementary School, Mrs. Stupinyan.
Good evening, everyone. I am pleased to announce two awards for Gregory School. I'm going to start with our teacher of the year, which is our first grade teacher, Mrs. Kaitlin Pertuzzi. Kaitlin Pertuzzi is a remarkable first grade teacher. She is highly motivated, extraordinarily conscientious. She develops lessons that are innovative, fun, and specific to each of the learners in her classroom. She intentionally develops learning experiences that address the students' diverse backgrounds and family dynamics. She continuously seeks support and information from administration and her colleagues on how to best address each of her students' individual learning styles and needs. She builds strong, positive partnerships with her students' families as she goes above and beyond to make sure that they understand how to best support their child and/or their children at home. Over the years, Kaitlin has become a leader in her grade level, which has recently manifested to a leader in the school. During this remote learning experience, Mrs. Pertuzzi has been an integral part of Gregory Elementary School's support system and technological success. She volunteers her time to share tools and assist her colleagues with all different types of technological support. In addition to developing an open technology hotline slash help desk to support everyone, she, she takes extraordinary, extraordinary time in all of the things that she does. Mrs. Pertuzzi is a member of our diversity committee and our pandemic response team. She's also one of our PTA teacher liaisons and one of the chair people for our school's social committee. When considering Mrs. Pertuzzi's contributions to our school community and to the West Orange community, she is someone who is always involved in every event that is planned by our school and our PTA. All of our night at the museums, food drives, all of our Stop for Nikkeel fundraisers, you will see Mrs. Pertuzzi front and center. It has been a privilege to work with Mrs. Pertuzzi and to witness her professional growth over the past six years. I am honored to have her on my team at Gregory School. And then next up, we'll clap for Mrs. Pertuzzi. Well, well deserved. And next up for our educational services professional of the year, Mrs. Kathleen Kelly. She is our speech language specialist. Mrs. Kelly is an exceptional speech language specialist. She is incredibly kind and nurturing to all of her students and to students that she doesn't necessarily service. All of her speech therapy sessions are planned in great detail and care. She not only considers the varying abilities of her students when planning therapy sessions, she also incorporates tasks and activities that are of high student interest. She goes above and beyond to provide her students' families with resources to support their growth and development at home so that the skills and strategies that they are learning with her at school can transfer into their day-to-day lives. When Mrs. Kelly presents information to colleagues and families in meetings, she is not only thorough, she is intentional in making sure that the information is digestible and comprehensive for all participants in the meeting. Mrs. Kelly is an incredible resource at our school. She is sought out to discuss potential speech referrals and to guide teachers with strategies that can help students meet their goals outside of their therapy sessions. She makes herself available to meet with teachers as soon as she knows that she is needed. She is considered an expert in her field, and she is highly respected among all of her colleagues and administrators that she works with. When considering Mrs. Kelly's contributions to our school and to the West Orange community, she is someone that I can count on to be present and willing to help wherever she is needed. She's attended all of our school-sponsored events, such as all of our night at the museums, our back-to-school luos, and various PTA events. She's also someone that I can only spot either jogging past me or running past me at all of the Stop for Nikkeels, especially because I'm mostly walking. She's participated in various fundraisers, and she's just someone who I can always count on. She's a valuable member of the team, and I am blessed to have her working at Gregory Elementary School. Thank you, Mrs. Kelly.
And congratulations again to our Gregory recipients and now principal of our Hazel Elementary School, Ms. Marty.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us here today. Hazel School, Schools Educator of the Year is Mr. Jason Roberts. Mr. Jason Roberts is a kindergarten teacher at Hazel since 2005. He is on his 16th year at Hazel and in West Orange. Mr. Roberts is an energetic, positive, engaging, caring, creative, nurturing, and generous teacher with his time and his expertise, not only with the children, but with the rest of the faculty. To observe Mr. Roberts is a unique experience. The way he communicates, engages, and holds the attention of his students will leave you in awe. I will share with you a message that I received once we disclosed that he was the winner of Hazel from a student of his who is now in eighth grade. And he wrote the following. "Mr. Roberts is one of my favorite teachers of all times. I have always had a personal connection with him, and he has really made a big impact in my life. A memory that I very vividly remember was during our Thanksgiving celebration, and I was in kindergarten. I remember that as they were passing out the food, I was given some turkey, even though I am a vegetarian. As he was walking around, he quickly took the turkey off my plate, remembering that I could not eat it. This really hit home for me because he remembered about my dietary restrictions. I remember that scenario because he showed me that he cared for me. He never missed a detail. Mr. Roberts made the classroom a fun place to learn in. I could count on Mr. Roberts to cheer me up no matter what my mood was. We had our little inside jokes, and the class was often filled with songs and laughter. I am now in eighth grade, and whenever I see him, we still talk. I remember when I was in sixth grade and I was speaking to my sister. As we were walking, we saw Mr. Roberts dismissing his kindergarten. I had a brief conversation with him about how school was for me, and he was truly excited that I had graduated elementary and was now in my first year of middle, of middle school. Now that I am older, I can appreciate how he took the time to get to know every one of us and created a safe and happy environment. Thank you, Mr. Roberts, for teaching all of your students the joy of learning. He is amazing."
Very well. Thank you.
Yeah, that's it. That's all for Hazel.
Thank you, Ms. Marty, and congratulations to our Hazel recipient. I am pleased to introduce our principal of Kelly Elementary School, Mr. Castillo, to introduce his recipients.
Good evening, all. At Kelly Elementary School, our teacher of the year is an amazing fifth grade teacher within an ELA, as the fifth grade is departmentalized. And she has serviced education for the last 31 years. Please welcome and in honoring Mrs. Amy Pacifico. Congratulations, Amy. Amy is a true educator who inspires students to learn. She takes the time to plan and implement lessons that are engaging. She painstakingly ensures that her student, that her class is one of inclusivity, which is evident in her class library. Multiculturalism and diversity are reflected in her classroom library as well as in all the activities that she chooses to do with her students. Congratulations, Amy, and thank you for all of your years of service to education and to students. Next, at Kelly Elementary School, we're going to honor our educational services professional of the year. This young lady has serviced our, has serviced education for the last 30 years. So please help me in honoring Mrs. Nancy Feldman. Congratulations, Nancy. Nancy is our school nurse. And Nurse Nancy has been a tremendous asset to our students, staff, and parents. Nancy has a vast knowledge in the health field, and her prior experiences in the hospital setting and outside agencies have blessed us with a nurse who comes with a plethora of knowledge and experience. She is an advocate and continually seeks professional growth opportunities such as webinars, podcasts, conferences, reading articles, and so forth to keep herself abreast of issues that will help her in her role as our school nurse. She always makes such a great connection with our students and addresses any health or even social emotional needs. She considers the whole child and always goes above and beyond her duties and makes each child feel valued. Congratulations, Amy. Congratulations, Nancy. Well deserved.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo, and congratulations to our Kelly recipients. Up next, principal of Mount Pleasant Elementary School, Mr. Giacomo, to introduce her teacher of the year.
Hello, everyone. I am so proud to present the Mount Pleasant Teacher of the Year, Miss Diana Ferrara. Miss Ferrara is an exceptional fifth grade English Language Arts teacher at Mount Pleasant, and she's been in education for seven years. And she's been at the forefront of change, not only at Mount Pleasant, but in West Orange and also in the nation. As an edcollab presenter and coordinator, she's networked with educators across the nation and is a leader of technology integration, ELA, and student activism. She's presented at national conferences on utilizing the global read aloud and social justice literature and topics to encourage her young students to make a difference, to connect with experts in the field and to conduct their own action research. A few years ago, one of her social research projects actually allowed her students to conduct their own research and learn about clean water in Africa. And her students were so moved by the injustice of people not having clean water that they raised money to build multiple wells in Sudan, providing clean water for local people. In 2019, Miss Ferrara won an award for outstanding action research in literacy instruction from Caldwell University. Miss Ferrara conducted action research that looked at the impact that knowledge of the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, along with nonfiction literature, has on fostering empathy in children. This has been a passion of Miss Ferrara's. Also, she is a true gift in inspiring her young ones to be the change that they want to see in the world. In addition, Miss Ferrara has been part of our technology integration team in West Orange. And as a member of that team, Miss Ferrara has led multiple professional development offerings with her colleagues for staff in West Orange. Miss Ferrara is up to any challenge, and our staff knows that they can depend on her to assist with any tech initiative. Her positive attitude, her can-do philosophy continues to be an inspiration to many at Mount Pleasant and in West Orange. Miss Ferrara has also worked with our ELA supervisors, both Ms. DiMartino and Ms. Hanrady, to revise ELA curriculum through the years and to ensure that we're teaching with rigor and to ensure that our curriculum connects to real-world issues. Miss Ferrara definitely inspires her students to be activists, and her colleagues find her to be, like I said, a true inspiration. Congratulations, Miss Ferrara. You're a gift to Mount Pleasant and education, West Orange, and we appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giacomo, and congratulations, Ms. Ferrera. Up next, I'd like to introduce the principal of Redwood Elementary School, Mr. Beaumont.
Evening, everyone. It gives me great pleasure to honor Terracee Bradley, one of our ESL teachers, as our teacher of the year here at Redwood. Ms. Bradley has served in West Orange for 17 years. She's a dedicated, caring, and highly effective teacher. Ms. Bradley consistently goes above and beyond the call of duty to engage her students and to develop strong professional relationships with our students' families. As a member of our ESL team, Ms. Bradley collaborates daily with staff to support her colleagues in preparing her students for academic success. Ms. Bradley does not limit herself to academics, however, as she works to help with a range of additional professional tasks, including translation services, scheduling, logistics, and social emotional support for students. As a lifelong learner, Ms. Bradley is always willing to implement new approaches to facilitate the success of her students and colleagues. Ms. Bradley is a true leader in our school and makes a positive impact at Redwood every day. Congratulations, Ms. Bradley. And next, I'd like to introduce Leslie Diglio, who is our reading specialist and Redwood's educational services professional of the year. Like Ms. Bradley, Ms. Diglio has also served for 17 years in West Orange. She is an exceptional reading specialist. Ms. Diglio is highly respected as a resource for students and colleagues, not only at Redwood, but across our district. Ms. Diglio provides highly targeted and skilled support for students with limited foundation skills and has a proven track record of raising their achievement levels. In addition, Ms. Diglio frequently can be found giving a workshop for staff members, helping other teachers find ways to support struggling readers, and working with students to provide individualized instruction. She has also hosted literacy family nights to assist parents in supporting literacy. She's a key member of Redwood's Intervention and Referral Services Committee, and as such, she researches cutting-edge strategies and facilitates their implementation to the benefit of our entire school. Ms. Diglio exemplifies our efforts to ensure literacy for all our students. She's a trusted coach, mentor, and leader in our building. Congratulations, Ms. Diglio.
Thank you, Mr. Beaumont, and again, congratulations to our Redwood recipients. Please introduce principal of St. Cloud Elementary School, Mr. Price.
Let me make sure, Mr. Price, are you? I'll make sure he's still there. I'm just gonna.
Oh, forgive me.
No problem. Can we just have you start your video? There we go.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Vesbignani. Thank you, Dr. Cascon. Thank you, board members. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for allowing us the opportunity this evening to come and celebrate an amazing staff across the district. We are blessed to have amazing professionals in West Orange. And on behalf of the faculty and staff at West Orange, I'm proud and grateful tonight to honor two amazing professionals. For the educational services professional of the year, Mrs. Sheena Brown, our school nurse, is being recognized. Mrs. Sheena Brown, um, our school nurse, is being recognized this evening. Sheena has served as the beloved school nurse at St. Cloud Elementary School for over fifteen years. Nurse Brown is solely responsible for the health and well-being of four hundred students and some fif- fifty faculty and staff members each and every day. Her clinical acumen, combined with her instincts as an educator, mother, and dedicated col- colleague, allows her to provide unparalleled services for St. Cloud School. Sheena is a district leader and trainer in our Health Data Systems, SNAP, and is relied upon by her fellow nurses for guidance in school safety and health protocols. Nurse Brown participates in school-wide, district-level, and community initiatives, including our Diversity Council, and is a regular and essential participant in all of our extracurricular activities. She is beloved by parents for her sage advice in matters of both the physical and emotional well-being of the child, of our children. Sheena is a member of the School Safety Committee, where she provides input into our school safety procedures and emergency management plans. Over the course of this year, Sheena has been instrumental in providing direction in our COVID-safety procedures and our preparation for the return of our kids in a matter of weeks. She is also a vital member of our Intervention and Referral Services Committee. Sheena Brown is in many ways the backbone of St. Cloud School, keeping us all standing straight and healthy, able to accomplish all we set out to do each and every day. Your colleagues at St. Cloud, friends and families, thank you, Sheena, for keeping them all healthy, happy, and safe. So, thank you, Sheena Brown, for all you do. For the Educator of the Year, the Governor's Educator of the Year, a well-deserved recognition, Mrs. Robin Berkowitz, who has served as an extraordinarily talented, unflaggingly dedicated third-grade teacher at St. Cloud School for over thirty years. Robin has indelibly touched the lives of hundreds of children and their families throughout her stellar tenure. Her tireless preparation, planning, and collaboration with her colleagues has allowed her to execute provocative lessons day after day that have met the needs of all her diverse learners year after year. She is sought out by her colleagues for the wisdom she has accrued on how to reach the most challenging learners and to meet not only their academic struggles, but also their social and emotional needs as well. Her insights into creative scheduling solutions or curricular adoptions have helped to shape St. Cloud into, into the incredible school it is today. Robin has been a member of our District Curriculum Council. She is a union representative and a team leader of our, of our third grade. Mrs. Berkowitz is our go-to educational innovator, innovator in school initiatives, and she never misses a school event in the evenings or weekends. She is praised, lauded, and loved by the families of her students each year for her tireless efforts in delivering the best possible education she can. Mrs. Berkowitz is recognized district-wide as a voice that champions the children first and also a stalwart supporter of her colleagues and their professional practices. She is respected and admired by all that have the ple- pleasure of working alongside her. So, on behalf of the St. Cloud family, thank you, Robin, for all that you are and all that you do. Much love and gratitude.
Thank you, Mr. Price, and congratulations again to Ms. Berkowitz and Ms. Brown. And now I'd like to invite Mr. Mayo, Principal of Washington Elementary School, to recognize the Washington Teacher of the Year.
I am honored to present to you this evening, Mrs. Linda Perna. She is a kindergarten teacher at Washington School, and she's the Teacher of the Year. She has served twenty-five years at Washington School. Mrs. Perna is an outstanding kindergarten teacher. She's kind and sensitive to the needs of all her students and their parents, and she's always there for them. Mrs. Perna established a student council at Washington School. She also coordinates programs for Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and this also includes holiday cards for veterans at Christmas, Valentine's Day, and Easter. She created the Super Bowl at Washington School for Holy Trinity Church. Our students, parents, and staff collect at least one thousand items, which include soup, canned goods, from the months of January to March. We then close the street so we can form lines of our students to pass along the cans to the church. She is really a remarkable woman. Thank you, Mrs. Perna, for all your wonderful efforts on behalf of Washington School. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo, and congratulations, Ms. Perna. I would like to now invite Principal of Thomas A. Edison, Mr. Fitzgerald, to join us to, uh, present his recipients.
Good evening, everyone. Good, better, best, never let it rest till your good is better, and you are the very best. Tonight, it gives me the distinct honor and privilege to outline two professional, educational professionals. One is the Teacher of the Year, which will be Pamela Romanchuk. She swore tonight that I could not make her cry. So, Pam, do not cry on this. Um, Pam has worked at Edison Middle School for the past seven years. She's an outstanding teacher. She's an outstanding teacher, leader. But more important, she's a better person than she will ever be an educator, and that's more important than anything that I could say about any individual. In education, you should know, as administrator or principal, or superintendent, or executive directors, you're only as good as the people you work with. And to work with Pam has been, for the past seven years, such an experience that, you know, if I ever need anything done, she's there for me. Um, she serves as a team leader. Um, she's rewritten the social studies curriculum at Edison Middle School. Um, she's mentored many teachers in her past seven years, and it's just so... I, I gotta be honest with you. Um, I've been at Edison for the past sixteen years. This is the first teacher I have ever nominated for Teacher of the Year. And that in itself tells you a lot. Um, Pam is awesome in her job, and she, um, communicates with students. She builds that rapport with parents. She makes sure that the students have value and understand their value in her classroom, and you cannot ask for anything more. Um, the second person I'd like to introduce is Mr. Arturo Rodriguez. Yes, please, round of applause. Arturo Rodriguez moved two years ago. This is his second year in our literacy, as our literacy coach. But two years ago, um, he moved from an ELA classroom to our literacy coach. And when I speak of Arturo, I have to go back to when I, um, first saw Arturo. It was in the middle of, uh, uh, of the summer, and I was in his classroom as a demo lesson. And a former ELA supervisor said, "You gotta see this kid. He's great. He's great. He's great." And when I talk about Arturo, um, he's beyond any words that I can really use as a teacher. When you talk about technology, when you talk about ELA content, when you talk about how to make connections with students, when you talk about respect of colleagues, when you talk about communicating with parents, Arturo brings everything to the plate that you could want in an educator. So, with that, Mr. Rodriguez and also Ms. Romanchuk, it is my distinct honor and privilege at Edison to welcome you into that Teacher of the Year and Educational Specialist of the Year. And as always, good, better, best, never let it rest till your good is better, and you are your very best. And Olivia, I see you laughing because I knew you remember that, and it, it burns my heart. I appreciate it. Everybody have a great holiday. You'll notice that the secondary school principals will be a lot shorter. Bye, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald, and congratulations again to our Edison Middle School recipients. I'd like to invite Principal of Liberty Middle School, Mr. Clem, to join us.
All right, good evening, all. It is my pleasure to recognize Liberty's Educator of the Year, seventh-grade social studies teacher, Dan Creighton. Mr. Creighton is in his fifth year at Liberty, sixth year in education, and he's such an enthusiastic teacher who relates exceptionally well to our children. Beyond his classroom efforts and accomplishments, Mr. Cre- Creighton contributes to everything beyond, uh, the classroom. He serves on our Intervention and Referral Services Team, provides staff with ongoing technology support, has served on our tech team, and is also part of the School Improvement Panel. These are just to name a few. I am so very proud to recognize Mr. Creighton for his, uh, exemplary efforts in the classroom and for our school community. Congratulations. Happy holidays to all.
Thank you, Mr. Clem, and congratulations, Mr. Creighton. All right, and wrapping up our middle schools, Principal of Roosevelt, uh, Mr. Hush. Welcome, please join us. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to first bring forward our nomination for Teacher of the Year. We have Tracy Gordon. Tracy Gordon has been an impactful member of our school community for eighteen years. As a team leader, she guides fellow educators, and as a teacher, she creates innovative ways to enrich, uh, the experiences of her students. As a building and community leader, she is an advisor for Roosevelt's Community Service Club that holds food drives for needy families, runs coat drives with the organization One Warm Coat, toy drives for special needs students in underprivileged neighborhoods and in West Orange, organize gifts for our troops, and raise money for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society and Susan G. Komen Organization for Cancer Research. Within the building, Tracy co- co-advises our advisory tutorial program, which works with students struggling academically and helps spearhead our lunch pails program, which brings our self-contained students and general ed students together socially. In her time at Roosevelt, Tracy Gordon is well-known for embracing our most challenging students and giving them the tough love, care, and attention needed to nurture their growth and consequent- consequently, helping make Roosevelt the place of comfort for these students. Roosevelt Middle School, Middle School has served as a place of comfort for so many students and staff members like Tracy Gordon are part of the reason why. So, I'd like to congratulate Tracy Gordon for her nomination. Our Educational Services Professional of the Year, we have Dr. Suzanne Lee. As a valued member of the Child Study Team, Dr. Lee is an advocate for children and families needing extra support and services. She often goes above and beyond to ensure that every student and family has access to resources to help them succeed. On numerous occasions, Dr. Lee has personally visited homes in order to hand-deliver paperwork, meet students in crisis, or coordinate services. As a member of our school's INRS committee, Dr. Lee proves to be an outstanding resource, providing strategies for teachers to help struggling students before being referred to the Child Study Team. Suzanne is bilingual, manages a sizable caseload, counsels students regularly, and is frequently sought for her opinions when we, as administrators, are considering changes that may affect students. Dr. Lee regularly attends workshops and other professional development opportunities in order to stay atop of the latest research and strategies that may help her students. Teachers can be seen going in and out of Dr. Lee's office regularly, looking for input and guidance. Because of her efforts, Roosevelt Middle School is better equipped to serve our neediest children. Because of her, I am a more conscientious administrator, considering factors that I may have overlooked when making decisions affecting all of our kids. Because of her, traditionally underrepresented families have a champion that will fight and advocate on their behalf. Dr. Lee, Dr. Lee already has the respect and admiration of all those she works with and for, whether she realizes it or not. So, congratulations to Dr. Lee as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hush, and again, congratulations to our Roosevelt recipients. And wrapping up the presentation, uh, I'd like to welcome Principal of West Orange High School, Mr. Moore, to join us uh, to present his Teacher of the Year.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you, Dr. Vespignani. Uh, hello, Dr. Casco, and I just want to take two minutes before I leave to say, uh, something to Miss, uh, President Alper, if I may, for a moment. I don't mean to take up too much of the time. Just want to thank you, um, Ken, for all your services. It's very nice. I, I've had the, um, pleasure of your children here, and I'm thank you for that. But also, thank you for your time. There's a ter- it's a terrifically tough job. Uh, there's nothing easy about it, but I appreciate, um, your professionalism and your, um, standing up for what, um, you think's, uh, what is best and what you have done that you thought was best for our district. We appreciate it all. So, thank you very much, Ken. I just needed two minutes to tell you that. I've known you a long time, and we've worked together for a long time, so I just needed a minute to just say thank you to you.
Thank you so much.
No worries. Um, and, uh, you know, I don't, I guess, um, Xavier's right. The secondary guys are quick, right? I have one nominee, um, and, uh, my nominee, it's a great pleasure. I think you're all familiar with my nominee. Um, my, uh, Teacher of the Year will be, is Katherine Connors. Katherine, are you on? There you go. Katherine Connors. Katherine's, um, teaches bio and health sciences here at the high school. She does our health science program with Rutgers. Um, she, she's been here for seven years. Um, but what I think best describes, um, Katherine's, um, impact on our building and our students is her heart. She has a great affinity for our students. Um, the amount of, of what came to mind this year for all, um, of the administrators, uh, this year that were, that when we, I talked about and discussed this with, and some of the parents I discussed this with, is her volunteerism. She's always but willing to volunteer. Let me just give you an example. During this pandemic, it's a tough time, and everyone wants to stay safe, and we were all COVID-conscious. But Katherine helped org, helped us with the twenty-twenty graduation when it was the drive-through. She also came back and helped us for the in-person graduation. Um, Katherine also helped us this year with freshman orientation, uh, just getting some of the freshmen acclimated with the, um, campus. Um, again, willing to volunteer her time. She helped us hand out lawn signs. She drove with us to houses to hand out lawn signs. Um, and it wasn't that, we didn't have a large staff this year. A lot of us were doing it on our own. But, but, you know, for many of us, I'm the principal, you expect some of it. But for a teacher to reach out and to give her time, as Katherine did, I don't know how to thank her for that other than to nominate her, uh, for this award and acknowledge her in this public moment. Um, as a teacher, Katherine, uh, tutors her kids until the seven o'clock bus. That's our late bus. That's outside contracted times, but she sees no issue with that. Um, she attends a lot of the games. I know she picks out a student or two that she struggles with her class and then attends their sport. I know the trick. I've done that too. But she attends the sport, and she ma- and she shows up, and there's not many people that use that trick, but Katherine does. She's also an advisor for our student council, our board liaisons, who you can say with Ca- Katherine's guidance, nothing but professional, so thank you with that. And now she has helped out with our Mountaineer mentors, which was already a terrific group, but I think will be even more outstanding with Katherine's presence. So, tonight, um, it gives us great pleasure at West Orange High School to honor Katherine Connors and thank her for all her so, years of service.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Congratulations, Ms. Connors. Uh, this, uh, just about wraps up our presentation, but before we do, I just wanted to sincerely thank our principals for joining us this evening and, uh, really highlighting, you know, the great qualities of our educators here in West Orange, and also for your oversight, uh, within this process, uh, the Governor's Educator of the Year. A process from start, start to finish really does require a significant amount of administrative oversight, uh, with timelines and, uh, you know, ensuring that, uh, the forms are correctly handled. So, again, thank you to our principals for your leadership. Uh, just a reminder, uh, our, uh, recipients this evening uh, to join us at the Central Office tomorrow at two PM, where we'll be, uh, participating in a socially-distanced photo and we'll be, uh, distributing, uh, your awards for recognition. Uh, if you don't mind, perhaps all of our, uh, recipients could just flash on their cameras one more time, just so kind of a, a last bow, and we could give you your appropriate recognition. Thank you so much for what you do for the students of the West Orange Public Schools, and congratulations to you this evening. Very well, Dr. Casco and the board. This concludes our Governor's Educator of the Year, uh, recognition program. Thank you for the time this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Vespignani, and again, um, just want to echo, uh, Dr. V's, um, commendations, obviously not only for our recognized staff, but again, for our principals, and again, to Dr. Vespignani for his leadership in kind of shepherding this process along. It's great to have it back, um, and we look forward to doing this on an annual basis. Okay, so we just, uh, bid our, our guests, uh, good evening, uh, happy holidays, and we'll continue along with our report here. Thank you so much.
Hey, just to note that the, uh, panelist that we just saw, you can leave the meeting at this time. Um, I can send you over to an attendee if you'd like to join the meeting, or you can leave at your own, uh, your own leisure. Thank you. I can send you over to an attendee if you'd like to join the meeting, or you can leave at your own leisure. Thank you. Okay, do we want to start with the next one, Dr. Cascon?
Sure, that'd be great. Script this. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So the December Board Meeting has typically been a time where we've done something called the Parade of Honors. We do this at the end of the school year as well. Obviously, with the conditions in which we're operating presently, makes a parade of honors a bit difficult, but I did think it were important to, just as we kind of come to the end of, you know, the fall semester, as we come to the end of 2020, take an opportunity to just highlight some outstanding achievements and accomplishments of our district students and staff and the district as a whole. I think particularly at this time, a time when it can be easy to have our spirits wane and perhaps be, you know, kind of let pessimism start to creep into our mindsets. I think at a time like this is important to be proud of and take stock of the many great things that we've accomplished in spite of the challenges. And I thought this quote, you know, I kind of was looking for a quote that I think summed it up and I thought this did so well, which is that most of the important things in the world have been accomplished by people who have kept on trying where there seemed to be no hope at all. And I think so many, our community as a whole and the folks who we're going to talk about tonight and recognizing this presentation, I think really embody that. So I look forward to just kind of running through some of our achievements and acknowledging them tonight for the board and for the community. So just kind of starting off with our high school, pleased to kind of report that, you know, obviously, one of the most important things that we do as a school district as our students come to the end of their high school career is to work with them to ensure that for those who are pursuing post-secondary education in college are on track to do that. This is always a laborious task. Obviously, it's not less complicated virtually, but again, I want to just commend our students and commend our guidance office that to date, the most recent report I got is that we've submitted over three thousand college applications. In fact, one of our student liaisons, Andre, received her first acceptance with a track scholarship, so we congratulate Andre on that accomplishment and the many more acceptances that we know we'll be getting from our high school seniors. Great achievements, an honor roll. Quarter one, we had three hundred fifty-five high school students on honor roll and seven hundred eighty-two on high honor roll. I'd be remiss if I did not give a special individualized shout-out to our Air Force Junior ROTC program. Anybody that's on social media has seen the amazing work, the amazing just leadership that this group of outstanding young women and gentlemen, along with their leaders in Major Marchessini and Chief Thurston have done, from volunteering at the toy, you know, the toy drive in town, shoveling driveways, food drives. They have been everywhere and on top of that, they've continued to move their own squadron operations forward. So just a shining example, really the pride, one of the prides of our school, of our high school and our school district. So I wanted to give a special shout-out to the Junior Air Force ROTC and just to keep up the good work, because we're very proud of what you've been doing. Just want to give a recognition to one of our high school English teachers, Jennifer Studnicki. Another example of West Orange teachers kind of out in front within the profession and not only, you know, coaching here in district, but also in the profession in general. Studnicki attended the Drew University Summer Writing Institute and now is a teacher consultant through the National Writing Project. And as a requirement of the program, Ms. Studnicki researched and developed a professional development workshop entitled Engaging Students Through Culturally Responsive Teaching, which of course is important for our district. This is kind of one of the areas that we've been focusing on as far as our curriculum and our instructional techniques. The next four recognitions, and we have so many outstanding students doing amazing things and really extending their learning proactively and with initiative outside of the classroom. And whether that's just for, you know, professional pursuits, if you will, or whether it's just engaging in endeavors to work on bettering their community. We have some amazing young folks here in our district. I'd like to recognize the organization, a student organization that was formed this year, the Student Advocates for Mental Health Awareness, or SAMA. And you can see here is their board. I had asked the president, Victoria Brazos, to forward me this information today and I was really actually extremely impressed by the titles on the board. We have Vice President Alex Palmieri, Secretary Laurel Adams, Head of Public Relations, Grace Satia, Head of Research, David Tobar, Head of Recruitment, Emma, sorry, David Tobar is Head of Recruitment and Emma Renwick, Head of Outreach. So they are actually in the process of working with an outside professional, a mental health professional and with our own Department of School Counseling to present a workshop to our teachers. So we're looking forward to that. Like to recognize Amina Nekway, who's a student who I worked with and did an interview with on social media. She is a junior and she, her primary social cause, which she champions, is, you know, associated with Red Dot Day and service work around ending period poverty, including kind of getting period pantries set up at our high school and working on doing that in other schools as well. So I just want to again commend her for that outstanding work that she's doing to bring awareness to a topic that's not often talked about, but is extremely important, you know, to our female students. And a couple of authors here, one of whom is one of our student liaisons, Olivia Ridley. Actually, Olivia, can we plug Livian for a moment and just have her talk briefly about her?
Unfortunately, she had too much homework to do.
Oh, she's saying, and there you go. Well, you know what? If there's any excuse for leaving, that's a good one, right? Maybe, but so Olivia wrote a play that was selected one of seven nationwide event, hashtag enough, which is a short play competition. And the plays are written by teens about how to end gun violence. So we're very proud of Olivia and I'm sure that's the first of many works that she will publish, whether they be fiction or scholarly research. And Rhea Gold, who's a senior and also a member of the Superintendent Student Equity Advisory Council, just wrote a book in her spare time, in addition to her honors and AP courses in applying to college, the Gen Z Book. And this book helps decipher the inner workings of the newest generation's thoughts, beliefs, hopes, and dreams. So congratulations to our outstanding, some of these outstanding students, making West Orange very proud and really putting the education which they've gotten to good work for those pursuits. On the athletic side, our athletic programs continue to provide opportunities for our outstanding athletes to continue their playing career and oftentimes with academic scholarships. And so I'd like to congratulate Emma Mitchell, Kai Schultz, Gianna Festino, T.R. Wilson, Jason Raines, Shakai Carson, and Akwan Robinson for their signings to these outstanding institutions of higher learning where they will continue their athletic playing careers. So we congratulate them on their families for their outstanding achievement and wish them luck on this next path. Continuing along with some of our fall sports accolades, we have outstanding athletic coaches here. I'd like to congratulate boys soccer coach Doug Nevins, who was selected as the Coach of the Year by the New Jersey Soccer Coaches Association and head coach football, Darnell Grant, who was identified as Coach of the Week, a selected Coach of the Week by the New York Giants. And through that selection, the New York Giants program donated two thousand dollars to the West Orange High School Football Program. What a season. I mean, challenges, you know, left and right. Many, many teams, you know, against which we competed in other schools, were riddled with quarantines and were unable to finish their seasons or were closed. Our teams, by virtue of the outstanding leadership of the coaches, of parents in emphasizing the importance of following health and safety protocol, not only did we finish our season successfully, but our girls' cross-country team, girls' tennis, and boys' soccer, all won, and football, all won their division. And we had our boys' soccer team, which was ranked number fifteen in the state, and our football team, that ranked number one in Essex County and sixteen in the state. So we congratulate our athletes, their coaching staff and their parents, and all the supporting staff members for a truly outstanding season of a very difficult season. So we congratulate them. Moving along down to our middle schools, you know, was looking for some information from our principals on both on perfect attendance as well as honor roll. And you can see, we like to congratulate perfect attendance. We had two hundred eighty-four students at Edison that demonstrated perfect attendance. We had seventy-nine seventh graders, eighty-five eighth graders at Roosevelt with perfect attendance, and a hundred ten in seventh grade and sixty-eight at Liberty. And many, many students who made both the honor roll and high honor roll. So I would like to congratulate all those students, truly outstanding accomplishments. Your superintendent is extremely proud of you, as I know your principals, your teachers, and your parents are. So keep up the good work. Doing it within this virtual environment is even that much more of an accomplishment. So congratulations. We start young here in terms of, you know, we have seniors writing books and we have third graders at Redwood School. Michael Costa Sparks and Carter Duncan, who decided that they wanted to set up an online homework club for twenty of their peers. So Michael and Carter developed the idea themselves, recruited their friends to join, and as part of the club, students have collaborated virtually on a combination of academic and creative projects. And we are so proud of their entrepreneurial spirit. I never cease to be amazed. More times than not, we don't give our kids nearly enough credit. The modern student, the modern kid is truly a phenomenon. And I think Michael and Carter exemplify that. And so we congratulate them on this outstanding entrepreneurial endeavor. And I know that their teachers and their principals, and of course, their parents and families must be very proud of them, as am I as your superintendent. So keep up that good work and we look forward to seeing the good things to come. You know, continuing along the line of some outstanding, this time on the elementary and middle school level. Now, at the top of the list here is Dr. Kerry Orange Jones, who's a Kelly Elementary teacher. And we will recognize Dr. Jones at a successive board meeting with a lengthy presentation. But this is a truly outstanding achievement by one of our professional educators, having received a 2020 New Jersey Exemplary Educator Award. It was only one of ninety-three educators statewide to be chosen for this. And really, these are educators who are valued by their school and community, have exhibited strong knowledge and skills, an inspiring presence, and a clear vision for quality teaching and learning. Dr. Orange has not only been involved with our equity and diversity ed camp, but also is involved on the higher level as an adjunct professor and writer and is a tremendous asset to the Kelly School community and to our professional community here in West Orange. Congratulations to Liberty Middle School Science Teacher Maria David, who was named Future Goals Teacher of the Month by the National Hockey League and National Hockey League Players Association. This is Future Goals Program in partnership with Everfy, teaches students key STEM skills using STEM sports, including hockey, that helps prepare students for success in life. An amazing achievement and even greater achievement having been identified as this, for this award in the virtual environment. So congratulations to Ms. David at Liberty School. We're very proud of your accomplishments. And I was very pleased to hear that our Kelly School teachers, Maria Kiddos, Stephanie Ross, and Diana Phelan, who formed a PLC, are going to be presenting at the NJTSAL and NJBE State Conference in May. And they put together a collaborative effort between ESL Special Education and the INRS team to develop a prototype of interventions that help distinguish between student behaviors that indicate learning difficulties and those that may be due to language proficiency levels. And having been a former ESL teacher and ESL supervisor, this is really critical work, because one of the things that we see, that we've seen traditionally, is that English language learners tend to be misidentified as special education because of a lack of understanding of certain obstacles that are created and caused in language acquisition process. So not only is this a tremendous benefit to Kelly School and to our entire ESL department, but it is making a significant contribution to the profession in general. So we congratulate them and we look forward to seeing their presentation later in the year. I'd like to just publicly thank the parents who agreed to serve on the Superintendent's Parent Advisory Council. We've had two meetings thus far. It is a work in progress from the standpoint of how we can best utilize this forum, but we are off to a good start. I have appreciated their time. I've appreciated their insights, their intelligent and critical comments. And so I'd like to publicly recognize Ms. Elizabeth Barry from Betty Madalena, Mr. Kevin Kerwin, and Mr. Eric Stevenson from Redwood, Ms. Christina Junkera from Hazel, Ms. Talisa Folks from St. Cloud, Ms. Lee Sutton from Liberty, Ms. Melissa Cooper from, actually, Dr. Melissa Cooper from Roosevelt, Mr. David Horn from Gregory School, Ms. Aura Gordon, and Dr. Demali Campbell from Mount Pleasant, Ms. Mirna Brom, and Mr. David Seldon from Kelly, from Edison School, Dr. Philip Walden, Washington School, Mr. Victor Garcia, and West Orange High School, Mr. James Rawl. So thank you to these folks for agreeing to serve and for their time. It is greatly appreciated. I'd like to thank the Diversity, Equity, and Access Committee. This group is, it's a smaller subcommittee of internal players. Ms. Kimya Jackson, who's Assistant Principal at Redwood and Washington School, along with Cheryl Butler, our K-12 Director of School Counseling, Mr. Lionel Hush, Roosevelt Middle School Principal, this is Stephanie Soriano, K-12 Supervisor of Science, and Hillary Rubenstein, Roosevelt Middle School Science Teacher. This committee amidst the pandemic has kept their noses to the grindstone as it relates to moving our diversity, equity, and access initiatives forward, including surveying earlier in the summer our staff for perceived needs for staff development around, in the areas of diversity, equity, and access, and from which were planned a number of staff developments that have been ongoing over the course of the year, including culturally sensitive teaching, as well as microaggressions and implicit bias training. And we've received a lot of positive feedback. And so I appreciate, just wanted to give them a public shout-out, if you will, and acknowledge them and recognize them for the outstanding work that they've done in this area on behalf of the administration. So thank you to this team. And I have to thank my Student Equity Advisory Council. This is kind of a maiden voyage of this group. The students that are serving on the council with me this year are Marley Diaz, Rhea Gold, Jacob Klausner, Finley Lewis, Bellin Osborne, and Dylan Wemberly. Ms. Jackson is co-chairing the group with me. And just to give you a quick update on the work, the group came up with a survey that was administered to the high school students relative to experiences that students may have had with, you know, with ableism, racism, sexism. We have the results back from that survey and we're in the process of planning a panel discussion with the students for a high school faculty meeting later in the winter, when the students can share the results of the survey with the high school staff, you know, with some important takeaways from that, from the student perspective. So I want to thank those students and I also want to thank them for their patience as well, as we've kind of, we're also kind of in some growing pains working through how to best have this group function. But we've created an open dialogue between the Superintendent's Office and the high school students, which has been a very eye-opening and constructive experience for me and hopefully for them and ultimately for our staff. So thank you to them. And finally, I just want to, there have been so many folks who who have, you know, throughout this pandemic, that have really assisted in, you know, really kind of a team, kind of army-type effort that, you know, there are things that we're able to do as a school district that maybe the community is in vice versa. And so I just wanted to really give some recognition to a number of folks. Obviously, Mashes is our food services provider. We recognized them last week with an appreciation luncheon, but I have to acknowledge them again for the work that they've done to keep our students and our families, you know, fed, you know, serving literally, I would think it's close to a million meals by now that they've served since the beginning of this pandemic. And so I wanted to thank them for just their constant service to our students and to our families. I'd like to thank St. Barnabas Hospital and Vice President Margie Heller, who's, I believe, is a West Orange graduate and a longtime resident of West Orange. They came to our aid and have made a number of charitable donations to the district for, you know, surgical gowns and other PPE that we're going to be able to utilize. So I do thank them for that. I'd like to thank the county executive, Joseph DiVincenzo. You see on a weekly basis, the, you know, the food pickups, the COVID testing sites. I mean, the county has really been amazing and just constantly, every time I see another one, like, thank goodness, they're still doing this. And I know that the services that they provided have been of great help and assistance to our community. So we appreciate our partners in the county helping out our community as well. I'd like to again thank Tony's Kitchen in Montclair. Our partners in the county helping out our community as well. I'd like to again thank Tony's Kitchen in Montclair. Tony's Kitchen reached out to Anne Merman from, from Tony's Kitchen reached out to me last spring and they've been helping out on Fridays at Washington School. With, uh, boxes of fresh fruits and vegetables for our families. And they continue to do that on Fridays to help our families over the weekend. So thank you to them. Thank you to the Holy Trinity Food Pantry and Cynthia Coming. They also have been just a constant, uh, you know, force of assistance in the community. And want to thank them. I'd like to thank Mayor Parisian Sunshine Fund, uh, most recently, uh, for donating. Uh, along with, uh, Deputy Mayor Rudolph Rodriguez and the West Orange Hispanic Foundation to the annual toy drive, which took place. Recently at Washington School and thank them for their generous donations. And I'd just like to thank our partners in the West Orange Office of Emergency Management, Department of Health. We are constantly reaching out to them when we have confirmed cases to help us work through contact tracing. Um, you know, they, they have been at this for nine months nonstop. And continue to just be a steady presence and force of support in the community. So I wanted to thank them as well. Obviously, um, and just go to the last slide, which is just really a thank you to all. Obviously, this is just the tip of the iceberg. There are so many people, so many individuals who have stepped up, who have performed selfless acts of generosity and kindness. To, to fellow community members. And as a result of that, and notwithstanding some challenges that we continue to face. I, I truly believe it's how we've been able to kind of weather this storm and how we've been able to at the front end of this presentation, continue to move forward successfully and achieve. Is because we have stayed together, we've stayed unified as a community, and this community has shown its true colors and so has that goes. So again, thank you. To all those, congratulations to all, um, those recognized tonight. And I wish everyone the very best for our Christmas, happy holidays and a happy new year. Okay. Transitioning, um, to, um, you know, our next, our next recognition, and I'm just going to say a couple of quick words and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Vice President Trig Scales. But as I had mentioned before, um, this will be Mr. Alper's final board meeting with us. Um, and so. We would like to officially recognize him tonight, the board would. And so at that, I would turn it over to Ms. Trig Scales to, um, read the motion into the record.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Cascon. This is not a happy occasion because we're certainly going to miss Mr. Alper, but. I will take care of my business for this moment. And so I am recommending approval of the following resolution. And this is presented to Ken Alper by the West Orange Board of Education, Essex County. Whereas Ken Alper has served the citizens of his community for three years as a member of the Board of Education. And as the board's president for two of those years. And whereas Ken Alper's service to the West Orange Board of Education includes his leadership. And participation in a wide range of committees and associations, including, but not, but not limited to negotiations and Essex County School Boards Association. And be it resolved that the West Orange Board of Education expresses its deep appreciation to Ken Alper. For his exemplary service to the children of West Orange Township and the state of New Jersey. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Essex County School Boards Association. Is there any discussion?
I think I would just like to say thank you, Ken, for your leadership and your support, um, when we came in, uh, as new board members last year. I'm sorry to see you go and I wish you lots of luck and we, I know you'll, you'll stay in touch and we thank you for everything you did for us, uh, coming in this year. I really appreciate it.
Absolutely. I would love to echo that as well. I have a, a few words that I'd like to say later, um, during the, during the board reports, but for now. Exactly as Ms. Tunocleff said, uh, Mr. Alper, you were incredibly supportive, um, uh, in, uh. In helping us out as we got started and up to speed on the board and very grateful to you for helping us to be able to do the work here and serve our school community. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add, you know, my thanks to you as well, Ken, um, for all your work. Um, I have my comments for later on board reports, but. Definitely just want to recognize and thank you for everything that you've done for the school district, especially this past year. I think as president, you've done a lot to help move a lot of, um. Move the, the, the board as a whole forwards and we made a lot of progress. So thank you for that.
Okay, and before we take a vote, I'd like to present one of two. Yes, no? One of two plaques to Mr. Alper. Can you see that, Ken? I'm holding it up so the camera can see it as well. And it reads, presented to Ken Alper for your dedication, commitment and years of service as a member of the West Orange Board of Education. From January twenty eighteen to December twenty twenty.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Alper. And we have another. All right. And here is the second beautiful presentation. And it reads, presented to Ken Alper, President, West Orange Board of Education, January twenty nineteen, December twenty twenty. Ken, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you so much. I'm deeply touched and honored. Oh, these are beautiful. I've missed the hammer. It's great to have that back. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I'll have more to say later as well, but I'm, you know, very touched and deeply appreciative of that. That's very kind of you all. These are gorgeous. Thank you.
So can we get a, a motion to move the resolution?
I will motion.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Marklinger?
Yes.
Just what scene?
Yes.
Mrs. Tunocleff?
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales?
Absolutely.
And President Alper?
Yes. Thank you. All right, moving on, uh, questions from the public or comments from the public on agenda items only. As always, you'll have three minutes. Be sure to give us your name and your home address and, uh, raise your hand and all that. Lauren will walk you through it.
Thank you so much and congratulations, Ken.
Thank you.
So for our patrons in the audience, it is the raise your hand feature located at the bottom of your screen. If you don't see it, you just wiggle your mouse and you'll see it there. For anyone who is calling in, it is star nine and you only need to press it once. And you also can press that button at any time. You do not have to wait for the last person to speak. It will put you right in the queue. And we're going to start off, thank you with Melinda, uh, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello, good evening.
Yes, how you doing?
Hello, Melinda Huerta, Seventeen Park Drive Southwest Orange. Uh, I did want to echo the, uh, board's, uh, congratulations and thanks to. Mr. Ken Alper for your service. Uh, we really appreciate it and, uh, we have a lot of work, uh, left ahead of us. So we hope to keep in touch. And I did want to congratulate the educators, uh, the governor's educators nominees. That were presented by the, the principals and the schools. That's just, uh, another example of the, the great work that West Orange is doing for our schools. And I did actually want to mention as a resident, um, Mrs. Maria Vera, who is an Orange High School Counselor, she is a West Orange resident. Um, and she has, has also been nominated for the Governor Educator of the Year. Um, and I just wanted to mention that and point that out. Um, and let me see, I did have a couple of comments on the agenda items. Item B one on the bills list. I do see that we have some grants and I'm glad to see that we have some awards and donations that we're receiving. And. Sorry, lost my train of thought. Um. Um, that's all for right now. Thank you so much and have a great night.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And Sandra Mordecai, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Sandra Mordecai, five sixteen Pleasant Valley Way. First of all, I just want to say rest in peace to Gail McCullough and condolences to her friends and family. She always had, uh, kind word to say whenever I was in central office, so for any reason over the many years and always a smile on her face. That is so very sad to learn that she passed. Congratulations to all students, faculty and staff honored tonight. Um, and, and especially to all the students working under these challenging times and still managing to. Put out their college applications and make the honor roll and high honor roll. Thank you, Ken, for your service and dedication on the board. And of course, um. You know, service on the board, uh, also comes at a cost of family and free time. So your, your service is truly appreciated. It's been a very strange year for all and the board has had a difficult job on a regular day. And I guess this is the new normal for this year and who knows how long to come. Thank you, Mr. Calavano. Uh, congratulations, I guess, on your retirement. It's going to be tough to see you go. But thank you especially for implementing Systems Three Thousand and the zero-based budgeting, which many on the board pushed for for several years. And for your expanded agenda, which always made it easier for us to know whether or not an item was budgeted or unbudgeted. Looking forward to. Your, to, to see what your replacement has to offer. So, um, welcome aboard to Ms. Tanya Flowers and, and good luck to her. And I see that Ms. Flor is, is going to be handling things until she starts. So. Thank you again to both you and Ken for your service and, um. I, I guess stay in touch, John. I want to see those grand baby pictures. And, and, and by the way, everybody knows this by now, John has the best hair of anybody, al- always. Yeah, it's looking at his hair. His hair is always beautiful. Thank you, everyone. Merry Christmas, everybody, and happy new year. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next we have Susan McAvie. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello, um, Susan McAvie, Two Mountain Way. So I just, I just wanted to say thank you to Ken Alper for his time on the board. One of the things that's always impressed me about Ken was that for ages before he even decided to run for the board. He was there every time at the meeting and like, I would come and talk to him on the blacktop and he could tell me everything that was going on the board. No matter, you know, what it was, he always knew he was always there. And I think that that's just, um, that kind of dedication is, is really nice. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Laura Lab, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, everyone. Laura Lab, Cunningham Drive. Um, I wanted to say thank you to Ken and to John. The thing about being a board member until you've sat in that seat, you have no idea what the amount of time and the commitment that you make and pledge to make for your community. So I thank you, Ken, for your service. Uh, the thing is also, it's the institution that's the constant. Board members, just like students, like administrators, like business administrators, we're transient, we come and go. And you hope that you can leave the institution better than you found it. And, um, I thank you, Ken and John. Boy, we had fun. I'll miss you. I always thought that you should come into a board meeting with a Miami Vice soundtrack playing as you walked in with your briefcase. You definitely ran the numbers well for us and I too wish you well in your retirement and enjoy your grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Ron Charles, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, how you doing?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Ron Charles, twenty-five Colonial Woods Drive, West Orange. Um, I just want to jump in and extend my, uh, well wishes to Ken and his years of service, uh, to the board. Before I get to John, I just want to say it's nice to see that, um, the board and the superintendent administration has continued. Honoring the staff and the students of the district is something that I personally thought about maybe about four years ago when we started it. It was something that was needed and it's glad to, I'm glad to see it continue on. And congratulations to everyone tonight who has been recognized. For their accomplishments. Uh, to John, I want to wish him the best in retirement. Um, I worked with a lot of, uh, business managers, both professionally and on the board through my thirty-seven years of government service and John certainly. Ranks up there as, as certainly, uh, the best. So I just want to extend my, uh, congratulations, uh, on your retirement and wish you well. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Braxos, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, Victoria Braxos, um, one thirty-six Eagle Rock Avenue. Um, I am the president of SAMHAW, which, um, Dr. Cascon mentioned earlier. And, um, I just wanted to thank him for the recognition. Um, you know, SAMHAW is a group that. We've been working really hard since our founding in August. Um, we were founded because we saw a need for, um, mental illness to be discussed with a student voice. And we are just really excited to be recognized for all the hard work that we're doing. We're excited for, um, the workshop surrounding the topic of mental illness in schools with, um, the school counseling department. That we hope to implement with the teachers and really excited to see how we can work with the district in the future. So thank you again, Dr. Cascon, for the recognition.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh, Dr. Cascon, I was muted. That was amazing. I was talking and I was muted and I, it's me.
Karma, karma is, uh, you know.
It's, it's coming for me. Uh, if we have anyone else, uh, who would like to speak, um, from agenda items. I can use the raise your hand feature. Adam Kramer, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Good evening, Adam Kramer, um, Twenty Moran Road, West Orange. Ken and I, uh, over the years may have had many differences on policy issues. But despite those differences, um, I, it's very obvious he has a sense of public service. Any sense of humanity, um, that I really respect and admire. And, um, so those pale when dealing with policy differences. And Mr. Calavano, um, I admire you. You've been a straight shooter. You've, uh, let the numbers speak for themselves. And can say that you've done a public service. Thank you. On the agenda item, uh, there's something I see that I respectfully descend from. I noticed we have lots of stipends for coaches. I'm not saying athletics is bad. In fact, athletics is a very positive force in the world. However, I respectfully say the board is putting the cart before the horse. You're not even open to the classrooms during COVID. You haven't figured out how to make the classroom safe. I don't know how you're going to figure out how to make a basketball court or a hockey rink safe for COVID. And I'm thinking your priorities are a little bit backwards. Every coach that I've thought highly of has always said academics first, athletics second. I've always admired the coach who had the courage to bench star athletes if they, if their, their academics were slipping. And I just think. The optics of it are a little wrong. Um, and that's all I have to say on that subject. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And with that, uh, we have no one else raising their hand.
All right. Um, thanks to everyone for your kind comments. Adam, thank you very much as well. I really appreciate that. You know, on the, on the coaching stipends, you know, personally, I would say, you know, it's, it's, it's not a one or the other, right? It's not that. It, it's, you know, if it were the case that having coaches on the agenda or having activities. You know, if that were delaying the return to in-classroom instruction by, you know, even a day, I would have a real problem with it. But it's, you know. It's not. They're, they're separate things and, you know, they're an important part of the complete academic, uh, the comprehensive education program in the district and, you know, provide a lot of. You know, social, uh, emotional learning as well. So they're an important factor. So I wouldn't want to see them lost. But, you know, again, it's, it's, it's not prioritizing one over the other. It's that, you know. And I think it was more easily, more easy to see this in the fall sports where everything was taking place outdoors. Um, you know, it's, it's an independent thing and, you know, they're running under their own guidelines from the NJSIAA. And, you know, it's felt that they can be done safely. Um, you know, if we thought that weren't the case, you know. Then who knows, you know, coming into winter and more indoor activities, you know, maybe the governor will decide that something can't be done or whatever. But, you know. Barring that, I think, you know, it makes sense to keep, continue to have those. barring that, I think, you know, it makes sense to keep to continue to have those things on the schedule and not to punish, you know, the students who are able to benefit from those because, you know, through no fault of their own, because we're not able to resume in classroom in class instruction as quickly as we'd like to. So that's how I've got. Doctor, see anything?
Yeah, I would, you know, I I I can appreciate Mr. Kramer's point. And it's it and it was not a an optics piece that you know, that that escaped me. I think prior to our conclusion and understanding that we were going to be able to move towards reopening in the new year. You know, I think that that would have that would have been a a difficult position to sustain. I think with the opening of school, you know, impending for January and early February.
Dr. Cascom, you have seemed to if we can just unplug your USB. There you go. Oh, I hear you.
I caught whatever Ms. Trigg Skell's had. Yeah. Did you did you give me your computer? Did you swap out your headphones? I think that's what's going on here. Well, you are the board vice president. I suppose that's your prerogative. Can you hear me now? Okay, all right. You know, so I I, you know, my position was is that when we were we were able to certify that we were coming back, you know, my position was that this was a that this was a position that we could we could support. And I think, you know, the board felt the same way for those reasons. You know, and I would just kind of echo the reason and we held off. Typically, we would have approved the winter coaches much earlier. We held off a couple of months in doing that to understand what the governor's position was going to be on indoor sports. And we would have waited even longer, except for the fact that these seasons do they do predate when we will actually be back in school, but only by a number of weeks. And I think when I listen to you know, students and student athletes and parents, and I see some of the opportunities that our students have been able to garner as a result of their participation in sports and weigh all those things together. And again, with the ultimate factor that we will be back in this winter was ultimately, I think, what made me feel comfortable moving it forward to the board and ultimately, you know, you know, the board's forthcoming vote on it. I I just have two kind of one-off things, Mr. Alper, which slipped my mind. But when I saw Ms. McAvie in in the public comment, I just wanted to publicly thank Mrs. McAvie for her generous donation of some really nice masks to the central office, which we're actually gonna be doing a nice picture in those masks tomorrow. I got myself a Marvel one, superhero one. You know, but Ms. McAvie, we appreciate that. They're they're beautiful and our the staff here at Central Office was very thankful for that. So we appreciate it. And I just, I was remiss in my recognition of the 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 district's diversity committee. I accidentally left off our K through 12 supervisor, Mr. Figurito, which is a big miss because Mr. Figurito has gotten out in front and done some outstanding work in, you know, advancing the Amistad curriculum this year and doing some excellent work with with bringing in trainers to work with social studies teachers on, you know, kind of widening their perspective. So, Mr. Figurito, if you're listening, I apologize for the oversight, but it merited a public mention. And that, Mr. Alper, is all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. We're gonna go a little bit out of order and we've got Charlene Peterson with us here tonight. She's our field representative from the New Jersey School Boards Association, and we're gonna do our board self-evaluation presentation with Charlene. So we'll take care of that now, since she's been waiting for a while for us to get to her. Hello. Good to see you.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to be here tonight. And also, you know, I enjoyed sitting through, you know, what I've heard so far of your meeting. You know, we always tell boards that the focus of your meeting should be on student achievement. So you don't always get the opportunity to actually see it in action. So tonight, it was wonderful to see the staff being recognized for their work in student achievement, the the students themselves. So I guess it's only fitting to talk about the work that the board does. And I also liked hearing from some of the previous board members too that I've worked with in the past. It was good to hear some familiar names. So for the benefit of the community, the board, it used to be required probably about five or six years ago that the state, you know, required boards to fill out a board self-evaluation. And when they relax that requirement, you know, we say that those boards that continue to do it fill out the board self-evaluation because it's a good governance practice. If we hold the rest of the district accountable, this is how we as a board then hold ourselves accountable by taking that step back and reflecting at the work that we do. So that, you know, the end result is continuing to improve our governance work, that there is more and more research that would suggest that high-performing boards, you know, can have a positive impact on student achievement. So New Jersey School Boards has a self-evaluation tool that each board member fills out individually. And then I am going to share my screen here that will show the the compiled results. So just want to kind of, again, hoping that, you know, we can involve the public someone and just kind of seeing some of the things then that the board did evaluate itself on. So again, just wanted to kind of walk through this process here. So the board self-evaluation was completed by all five board members. And it's comprised of nine different standards and it's based on a four-point O scale. So when we look at the board self-evaluation, you know, and I'll be talking about it tonight, just going over some of the highlights, it is really kind of using the board's words or, you know, based on what the board said about itself and encourage board members to jump in at any time and be part of the discussion, like I said, because this is, you know, your tool talking about your work. So if we kind of look at the columns of words or of the scores here, one of the things I really wanted to point out, you know, the board talked about the fact that it has been doing a lot of work and, you know, it's been through a challenging time. And we can see if we look at the board scores and look at the average board scores over the nine categories, this year, that average board score was a three-point four compared to last year that the board evaluated itself a two-point nine. And at the very end here, when we're gonna look at the nine different categories, we'll see that the board went up in almost every in every single category. So I think, you know, it really is a testament to the hard work that's going on here in the district, inclusive of the board as well. The the first column here, the board members are asked to talk about like or to rate what they value or how they value these nine areas. So what we look at in New Jersey School Boards is to see how you rank student achievement. You can see here that all four or all five board members said that student achievement was vital and ranked it the highest that it could. So that was wonderful to see. And then we will also look at the, you know, the board members fill out two different sections of each one of these nine areas. One, the first section is about the board. And then the second section is about you as the board member. So ideally, the board scores would be higher than the member scores. Considering that the the work that we do together as a team, that we should be able to accomplish more than any of us can do individually. So we can, you know, see that, well, that's not always the case here. You know, there, you know, would consider that to be an area that we would, you know, continue to just further develop our teamwork. So in the looking at the areas, like I said, we focus on the board scores. So if we look at the areas where the board evaluated itself, the lowest area that the board evaluated itself is student achievement, even though it said it valued it the most. And so when we look at that, we'll see that it's not really a reflection of the student achievement of the district, but really the board kind of holding itself accountable to oversight and the work that it should be doing in this area and holding itself to a high standard. Also, then that we look at the two areas that the board evaluated itself the highest. And those two areas were policy and the board and superintendent relationships. So it's just going to take the board quickly through each one of these nine areas. Like I said, please feel free to stop at any time and, you know, contribute or ask any questions. So the first area was planning. And here I looked at, you know, there was one indicator. Like I said, we are on a four-point O scale. We say that if there's any indicators or things that are under a three-point O, that sometimes that might be an area where you might want to, you know, focus more attention. So the lowest indicator in the whole board self-evaluation that the board evaluated itself was in reviewing action plans to support the goals. So as we as we look at this, I think what we see is that, you know, the board recognized that it gave the attention or really set a good model for looking at kind of the the goals and the plans for COVID, that you, you know, were continuing to have to update your planning. You were getting information at the board meetings. You were asking good questions. You were getting feedback. You were making revisions. And it's almost like that took the place then of the, you know, the board recognizes that it has a five-year strategic plan that's set to expire and said, you know what, we 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 recognize that we weren't doing the work in monitoring the street in the strategic plan, the way that we feel we should have. You know, knowing that probably most of our time was spent, you know, based on the on the current situation. So I think that the board, you know, is saying that we we recognize that this is our job. We recognize the value in it and we recognize that we didn't have, that we didn't do it this year, you know, for obvious reasons. So I don't know if any of the board members have anything they would like to add before I would move to the next section. Anything about planning? Okay. I'll move to the next section then. That's policy. So I had mentioned then that policy was the areas that the board evaluated itself the highest. And when we talk about policy, we really look at it in two different ways. And that would be the actual policy work that the board does. And then separate from that, do you recognize your role as a policymaking body and what that means? And, you know, what I mean by that is that, you know, you're looking at the district from that thirty-thousand-foot view. You're not getting involved in the day-to-day operation that you recognize that that is the the job of the staff. So you can see down on the bottom and where we said involve avoid involvement in the day-to-day operation of the district that all five board members said that they were commendable in doing that, you know, so which would suggest then that they do understand your role. And the board mentioned that all the work that you've been doing in policy this year and said that you're in the process of switching to a different policy provider. And as a result of that switch, and I remember doing that myself when I was on the board, all the work it takes in terms of reviewing every single policy, not only from the the language, but also making sure that it reflects the practices and the priorities of the district. And it really is a huge undertaking. And I think as a result of that, while it was a lot of work, I think the board members also said it gave them a new appreciation for policy itself and, you know, like you said, how policy does guide the work of the district. Any questions or thoughts from any of the board members about that?
I just want to take a minute to thank my fellow board members because I think, you know, this is my second year on the Board of Ed and my first year, you know, policy was out there, but it wasn't, we focused on it, but not as much as this past year. And I think we did as a whole, we did a really great job of of trying to move policy forward and understanding and having great conversations about it. So I just want to thank my fellow board members for that for this year, I think. And that's reflected, I think, in our scores as compared to maybe last year's. So I just want to thank everyone for that.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next section there. That's student achievement. You said this was the the area that the board evaluated itself the lowest. And again, not really anything that would suggest that the board had done anything wrong, except again, for holding itself accountable. If we look at number five and number six on top of the board saying how important, you know, the recognizing their role to monitor the effectiveness and also to set high standards for students based on multiple assessments. So here again, we find ourselves in a situation where, you know, because of the COVID, that we don't have any state assessment data for the board to work with. So, you know, again, recognizing that need, you know, the board needs to be a partner in student achievement. The board needs to understand the achievement needs of the students and needs to have, you know, that good information and need to hold have that monitoring. So the board is saying that, you know, again, that we need to hold ourselves accountable for that because it is so important. So, you know, you obviously have other means of assessing your students other than the state assessments. And, you know, some of the members had mentioned that they need to get a more consistent way to look at and evaluate that information. And then also talked about the fact that you have, you know, we say it's important as a board that you understand what's important to your community with respect to student achievement and saying that, you know, you have so many kind of diverse opinions and thoughts in your community that a lot of times too, it's hard to pull all of that together to make sure that you're meeting the needs of all of your students. So again, I don't know if anyone else has anything you'd like to add or question. Okay, then we'll move forward to the next section, which is finance. And here, the board indicated that that this was a strong area and that the board was involved in the the budget process. And, you know, I know that I I saw advertised your your community meeting that you just had not that long ago about the bud- for the budget and saw that you're having a second one. So I wanted to commend the board for that. It's just, you know, wonderful to kind of help, like, you know, the more we understand that the community understands what we're doing and the more we understand what's important to them, you know, our students benefit. So I really appreciate that, you know, that opportunity that you provided for your community. You know, the board recognizes the the challenges, the financial challenges that it has in meeting the needs of your students, but also the impact then and that it has in the taxpayers. And, you know, we say that that really is a delicate balancing act that's different in in every district and every community. And it really is, like I said, it really is a delicate balancing act. The board talked about, you know, its involvement in the budget process and said, you know, helpful it was to go through the budget-related policies and, you know, to talk about kind of what your budget priorities are. And, you know, really, the the timing for new members, you'll see, you know, the new members get on board in January, the budget process has really gotten started and almost, you know, barely get your feet wet. And it's almost, you know, it's time to have you know, those budget discussions and budget votes. So, yeah, again, board recognizing its responsibility in this area and, you know, the 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 need to make the community aware of the work that it's doing. Any comments from the board with questions? We'll move forward to the next section then. This is board operations. So this talks about how you work together as a board and how effective your method method of governance is. And when we talk about your method of governance, that would be, you know, whether you use standing committees, whether you, you know, do your work as a board of the whole. And, you know, and some of it, in your case, being a five-member board presents challenges for having standing committees that are, yes, would only be two members. So, you know, there was mentioned in here, I think someone talked about the heavy load, you know, workload that it is for the five members and, you know, talked about all the juggling and, you know, and just, you know, whether there is any options of looking at board size or just looking at other ways to do the work that you do. So just wanted to, you know, tell the board that, you know, at this point, you know, obviously, you're you're all dedicated and committed to the work and, you know, you're clearly putting the time in to make sure that that you are doing the governance work you need to do to provide for your students. I always look at number two on the top that says provides a climate that allows for free, open and orderly discussion by all members. Because really, that's where the board does its work. That's where you all bring your skills and your talents and everything together to come together as a team. And as a public body, you do your work at the board table. So it's important to to make sure that your board table is a place that you all feel, you know, free to be able to contribute. And that's clearly the case here. So I don't know if any of the other board members have anything you'd like to add about board operations?
You know, that number two, the the climate, you know, I'd be curious to see what that was in previous years because I do think that's been one of our real strengths is that we've really, you know, had, you know, I think everybody's really felt comfortable having discussions and it's been, you know, it's been a good thing for this board and, you know, I think that's really come a long way. You know, I think also where I think I think personally, you know, we're a remarkably efficient group. You know, we're we're not wasting a lot of time. We're not, you know, having a lot of cross-talk. We're not having to listen to speechifying from seven or nine or or, you know, even five people. And I think it works for us. And, you know, I think one of the things that I have observed is that, you know, most of what the board does is important enough that you're not willing to cede. I wouldn't be, you know, at no point would I think most board members ever want to say, eh, finance, you guys do the budget without me. It's okay. Yeah, I don't need to be on that committee. It's only the budget, right? You know, the, the important stuff, everybody's got to do the important stuff anyway. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's the job of being on the board, but that's me.
Great. And this just kind of looks at, because it was a long category, so then this is just the, the, just the individual piece of that. So then the next section looks at board performance. So this is differs in that it looks more like ethics, it looks more in, you know, confidentiality, the working together in a spirit of trust and confidence. And so here again, you can see that it was, you know, fairly strong area for the board. And I think, you know, Ken, you just talked about the fact that you feel like you've made great strides. And I think that that was recognized here in the comments and, you know, just recognized in the way that the board evaluated itself and said, yeah, you know, we're, we're, we're kind of called ourself a work in progress and said, you know, we've worked some things out. We, we recognize that we probably still have a ways to go in some other areas. But, you know, I also looked at some of the words that the board used when it described itself. And it was professional, mutually respectful, cooperative, honest dialogue and confidential. So I think those are all things that you should be proud of as the board in terms of describing the way that you work together. And if any members have anything you would like to add to that? Okay, then the next section was board and superintendent relationships. And so here, this was tied for the highest area that the board evaluated itself with an overall board, board score of three point six. It was also your highest individual area, if you can see on the bottom. For the three indicators there, the board was a four point O across the whole thing in terms of, you know, the board's respecting the management responsibility of the superintendent, observing the chain of command and participating fully in the superintendent's evaluation process. And then we, when we look at the top about the board, again, all five members said that you were commendable in keeping the superintendent informed. And also the evaluation process. So, you know, the, I think it really says a lot about the board's team and saying that, that this is a strong area, you know, because the, the superintendent is an, an ex officio member of the board. And together, when you have that strong partnership and that strong team is when you really are able to make a difference for your students. And I think that, you know, again, the, the board is continuing to show the fact that, you know, that, that the value in this team and how much they value that partnership. Any thoughts or questions from any of the members?
Uh, yeah, I, I just wanted to say this is one area where I feel not only particularly proud, uh, but hopeful because I think that when the, um, the relationship between a respectful board and a strong superintendent is very strong, then that speaks well for the professionalism and for the work that's going to be done and for the taking care of business for students. So I was very happy to see the high scores in this area.
And then the next section is board and staff relationships. And really if we say, you know, that we had that, um, the chain of command. So that would mean then that all of our communication, you know, everything goes through the superintendent. So how do we have a relationship with the staff? Well, the way we would do that is kind of similar to, you know, what we saw here happen tonight of making sure that we recognize our staff, value their accomplishments and their contributions to the district. Make sure that we're providing for their professional development needs. Are we making that a priority? You know, making sure that we have sound personnel policies. And then also when we are able to make sure that we are visible in the schools so that it's clear that we are championing and celebrating the work that's going on in, in the schools. And I think from, you know, from the board's perspective, I think that the board made it very clear how much they, they do value the staff, you know, even going so far as to say that, you know, even in these particular times that you were even, you know, concerned about their overall health and wellbeing. So not only recognizing them, but also concerned about them. So, you know, I think it shows here in your scores and shows here in, you know, the, the way that you talked about the priority of your staff and what they mean to you and the district. Any thoughts or comments from the board? Okay, then the, the next section or the, the last of the, the nine standards was board and community. So here, uh, you know, as we look at that, you know, I think talked about, you know, some of the great work that's going on in the district. You know, we are making sure that we are providing the opportunity for our community to not only know the things that are going on in the district, but also for us to hear from them. So some of the things that were mentioned are the town hall meetings, your pandemic action teams, your parent student surveys, your PTA council, and said that you continue to, you know, look at and expand community engagement initiatives. And then, you know, talked about, you know, the importance of a planner, you know, the board said that we would like to see taking all these initiatives and formulating a plan. I mean, I know that it was part of the strategic plan. I remember it being one of the arms or one of the goals, the areas of it. So, you know, I, I can, you know, and this was one of those areas that's pretty consistent among boards of saying, you know, pretty much no matter what we do, we know that, you know, we can never be as good at this as we need to be, that we always need to continue to find new ways to, to reach out and engage our community. So, um, that was it for the nine areas. I don't know if anyone had any questions about board and community. If not, then there were two open ended questions that you were asked as the board. Asked to identify major, you know, we said student achievement was your highest priority. What are three challenges you feel the district is facing? So if we look at that, you know, some of the areas that the board members mentioned were, you know, from an equity perspective, looking at diversity focus, race relations. And from a financial perspective, looking at the budget and balancing the education with the tax impact. Someone mentioned the CARES Act funds, looking at your infrastructure. And it was mentioned of your pre-K space, of your HVAC and air quality, any, you know, achievement gaps. And then looking at COVID and the impact that that's had going from virtual to hybrid and the financial impact that the community is experiencing as, as a result of it and how that could impact the schools. And then also the, you know, political and special interest in how that impacts, you know, decision making. You know, one of the things we find as a board is that once we sit on this side of the board table, that we recognize that while we, you know, are respectful and recognize that there are special interests. We now know that we are, our interest is what is best for all of the students in the district. That that is now who are, we are responsible for. And when we make decisions, that's what our decisions should be based on. Then the last open ended question then was looking at, you know, different governance areas. If there's any areas that you feel would be helpful for the board to have training on. Um, so some of the areas the board members mentioned was school law, ethics, a budget and financial planning, policy, navigating the political and outside influences, your professional appearance at remote meetings, equity and anti bias training and student performance data and goal settings. We kind of have a little bit, a smattering of almost all of the work that you would do as a board. But I think it says a lot about, you know, despite doing many of these things well of saying that we just want to continue to get better and continue to, you know, grow in the work that we're doing. So I had mentioned, you know, in looking at how we evaluated ourselves this year from how we evaluated ourselves last year, you know, we did see that we, you know, like I said, went up in basically every single area. So, you know, I hope that the board continues to, you know, stay focused on its work, continues to grow and, you know, continues to, to do the, the great work that it's doing. So wanted to know if anyone had any questions for me or any other thoughts about the board self evaluation?
Hi, Charlene, Charlene, it's Terry. Good to see you.
Thank you, you too.
Happy holidays. Just thank you. I mean, I know we got in under the wire. So we're sorry for pushing it right, right to the limit. But, uh, thank you so much because, um, you know, I, I kind of wanted us to get this done too. Because we do, we evaluate everything else in the district. So it's really important that we take a look at how we do business. And I'm delighted to see that we've improved over last year. I've only been on the board for two years, but we've made progress and, and I think we have gelled as a board. And, um, you know, thanks again to our leadership. But we've made great strides and, and you've been with this, this board for a number of years, so you've seen us.
I have. Seen you at your best and maybe not at best, right?
Yes, you, you've seen us over time, though this has been a good time for us. So, um, just too bad we didn't get to spend more time with you, um, doing group training. But hopefully, you know, after the pandemic, we'll be able to get back to that again. So thank you.
Oh, it's my pleasure. Okay, um, so before I go, I also wanted to, you know, to wish Ken well. Um, you know, he has always represented your board very well and can say whenever a question would come in that was really challenging. I didn't even have to look to see who it was from. I know it was from Ken. So I just, um, you know, want to say how much I appreciate working with you and also wish John luck on his retirement and would like to wish all of you a happy holidays. And again, thank you for the opportunity to spend some time here with you tonight and for your commitment to your students. So, thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you, Charlene. Putting this together as quickly as you did and thank you for always being such a great resource, especially when we really were your problem children.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, let's do some business. Personnel, may I have a motion for items one through four?
A motion.
And seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
All right, next, uh, curriculum and instruction, item one, may I have a motion?
Yes, moved.
Second.
Discussion. All right, let's vote.
This is Merkinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales? President Helper?
Yes. All right, next, finance, uh, special services, items one and two, and business office, items one through eight, may I have a motion?
I have a question. Um, can I ask it now?
Sure, why not?
Okay, um, for the special services, item one, I noticed that was from, that we're getting billed from the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. And I know they can come back. I didn't realize they could go back quite that far. Is there any limit to how far we can get billed the extra charges for these? Because they're like a grandfather clause or something in there or just, uh?
Yeah, it's supposed to be three years, I think, but I'm sure there's a loophole, right, John?
Right, and there is an issue with this one. So this, uh, school actually went back to the Department of Ed and the Department of Ed just issued a revised tuition adjustment. So that's why we're seeing it now for two thousand thirteen, fourteen. It rarely happens.
Okay, thank you.
All right, may we have, may we have a motion for these items?
And seconded.
All right, I'll point out we have some donations to thank some folks for, uh, John Frye, uh, the Black Blood Giving Fund on behalf of New York Life and its donors and the Aerojet Rocketdyne Foundation. Uh, thank you very much for your donations to our district. Any other discussion?
Uh, one more question on the, um, item five, are we still doing business? Sorry. Yes, item five under business office for the equity audit, does that have? I just wanted to have a little more color on what it entails and if there's goals and priorities in that.
We can't hear you.
I'm mute.
He's not muted. Can you just plug and replug? I don't know what's going on with your headset today. Nope. Let's try a different USB port.
How about now?
Here we go.
Thank you.
Actually, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I can hear you, hang on.
You cannot hear us?
No, I'm good now, okay.
Okay.
Um, thank you, Mrs. Tony Cliff. So, right, so, um, what you see here is a, is a, just going to kind of give you a, a number of points here. So what you see here is a prorated yearly contract. So a, a, an annual contract with Hanover for their research and advisory services is forty five thousand dollars a year. This is a half year contract. Now, this contract would entitle us to a number of projects should we wish to engage with them. The primary project which we're going to be asking them to assist us with is our diversity and equity audit. So what will this entail? First, it will, they will work with us on, um, on some of our messaging and communication as a precursor to actually launching the audit itself. And they have kind of a toolkit and a communication toolkit that'll assist us in kind of marketing and just kind of branding out this, this, uh, this venture. Secondly, is that they have research based instrumentation or surveys that we will use to push out to various stakeholder groups to gather feedback and information and data on a variety of different questions as it relates to diversity and equity within our district. They will also then work with us to call internal data sets, whether that be existing survey data that we have, student achievement data, financial data, facilities data, all of which will help inform the audit of the district. And finally, they will help analyze and process that into kind of a comprehensive and cogent dashboard, if you will, that can be then used for public facing presentations to both our staff and also to our community and which would also then reside, um, you know, kind of on the district's homepage and be kind of a public document that our community and of course the board would have access to and be able to see. That would be essentially where our relationship with them would conclude. And then we would use the summer to basically review the findings. And that's when we would become inclusive with our large diversity and equity committee, including our community members, to then look at that data, look at those findings and then develop a proposed action plan, multi-year action plan to address whatever disparities or weaknesses, if you will, were, were, uh, revealed within the audit itself.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, if no further discussion, uh, Mr. Calavano.
This is Merkinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales?
Yes.
President Helper?
Yes. All right, next up, petitions and hearings of citizens, public comment, any topic at all? Again, you'll have three minutes on the clock.
Thank you very much. Again, it's the raise your hand button located at the bottom of your screen. And Adam Kramer, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. Nope, lowered his hand. So we will go to Melinda Huerta.
Hello?
Adam, hold on one sec. I'm just going to take Melinda first. I had an issue with your hand lowered and we're going to take Melinda first, then I'll get right to you.
Okay.
Melinda, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Melinda Huerta, Seventeen Park Drive South. Um, my apologies, Mr. Calavano, I meant to say congratulations to you as well on your retirement and I hope you enjoy it. And I'm upset or a little let down that I didn't get to work with you as much as, uh, Mr. Mr. Alper had, had the privilege of working with you. Uh, and thank you for your service. Um, I did find my notes, which my child ran away with, so I couldn't complete my thoughts on that. I did find my notes, which my child ran away with, so I couldn't complete my thoughts on that. But I did have a question on item B1 on the bills list. I see a line for grants. It's approximately $234,000, $100,000, I'm sorry. And that's, I just had a question on what are those grants for our students and how were our families made aware of those available funds? The next question I had was with the grant that we received from Play Unified Grant, which is a Special Olympics grant. It's for $3,000. How will that be used and how will that be accessible to our families? You know, what is the goal for that, that grant? And I did notice, and I did want to go off a little bit with, Mr. Kramer did mention about the winter sports coaching assignments. My question was, is our district planning on carrying out the winter sports indoors? Are these activities happening on or off of our school facilities? And that was all. Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Kramer, if you can follow the prompt back on your screen?
Um, I just wanted to follow up on some things I said recently at the budget workshop. I'm strongly of the opinion that this has to be a zero tax levy increase year. That's gonna be hard. It's gonna be difficult. It's why sometimes people refer to economics as the dismal science. I've been talking to some people in the banking and real estate community and the estimates are anywhere on the low end of one in 10 to the high end of one in five. Families in West Orange are currently behind on a mortgage or a rent payment. As if you increase taxes, those increases will start really having an effect on the order that goes out August 1. At the moment we are in forbearance, there are no foreclosures, no evictions. The banks and the landlords can't live forever like that. So your tax increase, if you choose to have one, which I think would be a huge mistake, would hit very likely right as foreclosures and evictions start to come into play. And having tax increase on a class of people who are facing evictions or foreclosures is just punishing. I'm gonna say some things which you as board members who are in negotiation with the union can't say. Nobody wants to see layoffs. The teachers are valuable, good people. But that may have to happen. I think the union is gonna have to be realistic about what the tax-based status is and realistic about the fact that 75 to 80% of your budget is to cover the salaries and benefits of the four union, public union employee groups that you have contracts with. And they're gonna have to give you some flexibility. They're gonna have to be economically realistic about what they pay for pensions and, and healthcare. They may have to accept freezes in salaries. It's not pleasant. It's not fun. You've recognized teachers who deserve their recognition, so saying this is difficult. But the option of raising taxes is just not viable this year. And I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak on anything? And no one else is raising their hand.
All right, thank you. Yeah, you know, Adam, you raised some very good points, you know. I think the challenge is going to be for next year, as we've seen already with the numbers, a 0% increase translates to a deficit of, you know, somewhere, depending on what the state aid looks like, between $8 million and $9.5 million. So it's gonna be a hard one. But yeah, you raised good points. Dr. C?
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Mr. Calavano, would you take Mrs. Huerta's first question on the, the grants number from the bills list?
So when you look at the bills list, these are checks, expenses that are being charged to these certain categories. So when you look at grants, $233,000, that means $233,000, $233,000 worth of expenses are charged to the grants. Majority of that expense is out of district tuition from our IDEA grant. And then we do have a small portion of salaries from Title I that are being charged. So that makes up the $233 for this month's bills list.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano. I'm gonna miss you. He always knows the answer.
I had time to look it up.
Yeah, well, that's good. Play Unified Grant. So the Play Unified Grant, those, those monies are used principally for, to pay the stipends for the Play Unified Advisors. And, and basically those advisors work with the students and work with both the, the special needs students as well as the, the regular education students to plan and coordinate those, those collaborative activities. You know, you know, last year, what came out of the Play Unified program was a, a unified cheer squad. And so we're looking to kind of further expand upon that initiative. So that's what those are used for. Yes, the intention is winter sports will, will operate on our facilities with the exception of hockey, which happens at the Cody Arena. And that's, you know, under the auspices of the governors and the NJSIAs approval for those sports to begin on January 2. Having sat in on, you know, the county superintendent roundtable, so I will tell you that I have, I have yet to encounter a school in Essex County that, at least that I'm aware of, that is not moving forward and under disapproval. And there are, they are subject to a whole host of restrictions, namely presently there are no spectators. There's a very limited number of people who can be in the gym above and beyond the actual athletes. And there's a whole host of very strict health and safety protocol that are applied to protect as much as possible the health and safety of the athletes and the participants. That's all I have, Mr. Alper.
All right.
Just on the Play Unified. That's at West Orange High School. I just wanted to clarify because I think Ms. Bertha asked about how students get involved with that.
Good point. Yes, that is, that is at this juncture, it's just a high school program or club. Thank you, Mrs. Merklinger.
All right, board member reports. Before we start that off, I wonder who will have speak first. Before we do that, we have a little something for Mr. Calavano that I'll collect and run over to you.
I feel like one of us should be doing play-by-play.
Go for it.
I was gonna say, it's fun to watch him go behind each person, see what screen he's gonna.
Wireless headsets now.
So obviously, John, we're very appreciative of all your hard work and everything you've done for us all over the years. You know, as, you know, the BA is not only the BA, he's also the board secretary. So, you know, we all each, you know, individually deal with John for reimbursements for, you know, when we have travel and things like that and, you know, advice and, you know, you know, how meetings are supposed to operate and everything else along those lines. So, you know, you also, you know, are sort of the longest-tenured, you know, administrative person and, you know, kind of know where the bodies are buried and how things work and why they work, the things, why things work the way they do or don't work the way they do. And, you know, we're gonna, that institutional knowledge is gonna be, you know, hopefully you're gonna have a phone with you out on your boat because I'm sure we're gonna need some, you know, consultation here and there. But, you know, thank you and we all wish you very much the best in your retirement. Enjoy. All right. Mr. Rothstein, anything?
I know nothing at all tonight. Thank you. I'm just kidding. I, I've, I kept it sort of brief in the past, so please indulge me. I've got a couple of things to say tonight. First of all, to the, to the community, happy holidays and I'm wishing all of us some rest and hopefully a great 2021. I'm looking forward to some terrific improvements over this past year. To my fellow board members, thank you so much, especially to Mr. Trigscals and Mr. Merklinger for dragging us through the policy process and helping us to make so much important progress this year. And to Dr. Cascone and the administration, so much hard work. Very appreciated. And our faculty. I was thinking that one of the really amazing bright spots, you know, look for silver linings in this whole remote learning thing has been the window into my daughter's classes that I've been afforded because she's, you know, because we're all doing these lessons from home. And I am just so impressed and amused by her teachers. They are honestly just incredible. They're working so hard and they're motivating, inspiring, educating our students and most importantly, caring deeply about them. So to all of our faculty and staff, thank you so much for the incredible work that you do. It's, I feel terrible that, that Ms. Ridley, Olivia Ridley, one of our student liaisons, had to leave. I wanted to tell her how impressed I was by the hashtag enough drama presentation that I believe she pulled together. She was the emcee of the program. And the, the plays that these students put on were absolutely devastating about gun violence in schools. I, I was fighting back tears during several of them and thinking about the fact that there are exactly zero days in my education that I worried about random gun violence at my school, zero days. These students were writing plays and performing with such conviction that you know that these are issues that they live with. And it was just horrible and amazing to watch at the same time. I felt so proud of our students and so impressed by their talent and their maturity and what they brought to the screen for all of us. Ms. Ridley herself performed an absolutely devastating monologue. And I just wanted to, again, offer kudos and tell that entire drama group, please keep doing this, please keep doing more. It's important work and it was outstanding. To Ms. Melinda Huerta, looking forward to working with you on the board come January. So get some rest because this is a busy group and there's a lot going on. To Mr. Calavano, I absolutely gonna miss working with you so much. Your financial expertise and the care that you've shown for our district is so greatly appreciated. Also, as Mr. Alper mentioned, your knowledge of the rules and your service to this Board of Education as the board secretary for so many years. This is really gonna be, it's gonna be very difficult to get this done without you. These are big shoes to fill. And so you have my best wishes to you in your retirement. Thank you. And this brings me to Mr. Alper. Ken, one of my favorite curses, I think I would say my second favorite curse is may you live in interesting times. And Ken, you have served this Board of Education in very interesting times. You've been on this board for three years. And in your three years on the board, you've seen three people serving in the role of superintendent. A little bit unusual. You've also seen our schools shut down due to a global pandemic. I think that probably the Board of Education saw that about 100 years ago. But other than that, this is a pretty unique situation. Your tenure has really seen some incredible and unusual challenges. And I think to prepare you for it, as Susan McAbby said earlier, you are just somebody who was involved in the community prior to being a member of the board. I knew you from the Gregory School community. Just always there, always present, always knowledgeable, always able to answer a question. Not only that, but on, on Facebook pages. Just so helpful with the replies and your comments. Such a positive outlook and informative. And you really impressed me with your intellect and your ability to communicate. Here in this role, in this year, what I've seen is you've approached the role with responsibility. You've approached, I'm sorry, this responsibility with professionalism, with leadership. And most impressively, with this genuine and infectious enthusiasm for helping students. It's been really impressive to watch. Just a couple of notes on accomplishments, a few of your accomplishments, serving as board president two terms with two consecutive terms, which I think is pretty unusual. Helping to bring Dr. Cascone to our school district, which we're gonna be grateful to you for for many years. Playing in a significant role in bringing significant grant money into our district, which has been a great improvement. Leading the Board of Ed and joining the Fair Funding Action Committee, which led to increased state funding for our school system. And helping our Board of Education become certified, board certified by the New Jersey School Board Association, which only 14% of school boards achieve. So many incredible accomplishments that will have a lasting impact on us as a board and as a district. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your friendship. And thank you in advance for staying involved in our community.
Thank you so much, Gary. That was very kind and I really appreciate it. Ms. Trigscals?
Yes, good evening. We still have a good portion of the public with us. We're glad you're hanging in. I just wanted to commend our students and our staff for all of their accomplishments this evening. And I wanted to thank Dr. Cascone and Dr. Vespignani for bringing back the governor's award for teachers that, that's been absent in the district for a while. And we have such an outstanding staff. So I'm so happy to see that they are being recognized in that way here in West Orange and then, and then beyond. I am gonna keep my comments brief, actually. Mr. Calavano, I don't know who's gonna laugh at my corny jokes because I can always count on a chuckle from you. You've been so helpful. You have this calm demeanor. I have known a lot of BAs in my life and most of them are not calm. And so I'm gonna miss that in you. You're always even-tempered, as Dr. C said, you can always get the answer, you get it quickly. And so we know where you live and so watch out, we have your phone number. And we'll have you on speed dial for those, those questions that we can't answer. And Mr. Alper, I only met you a few short years ago, actually, when I was campaigning. And I was impressed with you then and I am even more impressed with you now, especially having served as your vice president this, this last year. I know a lot about education. I don't know a lot about being on the board. I'm a newbie. But I've learned a lot from you in the two years that I've been on the board and I have a great respect for you. And you're, you are the real deal. You're very genuine. You, you genuinely care for the, for the students here in West Orange and the staff. You have brought calm to the board. You have brought you and Dr. Cascone calm to the district. And as I said earlier, I think we have gelled as a board. And you're not going far because we know where you live too. And so we're gonna try and keep you connected and at arm's length so we can pull you back in. So don't make any plans, no long-range plans because we have plans for you. So I wish you all the best and I know we'll be seeing you all over town. So it's not like you're really going anywhere. But I know how much you're gonna miss this because I know how much you love it. And it, it's, it's clearly evident. And so, and, and we also have something for you from the board. So we'll air mail it to you. We know that you enjoy food and so we have something food-related for you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
So be well and and be fed.
Thank you very much. Ms. Merklinger?
So, you know, hard not to follow after Gary and Terry, but before I enter thanking everyone, you know, earlier, we did cover a lot of the student students accolades. And I just want to mention Emma Mitchell, who also signed for girl soccer with UMass. And then I just wanted to recognize that our Western High School football team was recognized as the Group Five Team of the Year, which is a huge achievement. If if it hadn't been for COVID, I have no doubt that this team would have probably been in the state finals this year. This group of athletes has been together and they've been playing together since they were seven, eight years old in our town rec program. So I just wanted to recognize a few of the players who were actually named to the all conference division, whether they're first team or second team. Dorian Rawls, Chakai Carson, Chris Parsons, Akon Robinson, Owen Murphy, Hayden Healy, Jared Massey, Mackay Branch, Jason Dort, and Mason Murdock. And I just want to commend their parents because these are gentlemen who have the utmost respect. They are kind gentlemen. They are professional in every manner. When you see them, they they give you a big hug, a handshake, a fist pump. You know, prior to COVID. After that, it was a fist pump, air fist pump, you know, but always smiles on their faces. And I just wanted to recognize them for for all their hard work. I know this was not the season that would end it the way they wanted. They probably would have loved to have gone to states, but congratulations to to the team and their achievements just as a whole, and especially to Coach Grant for getting them there. I also want to recognize that the Western High School Environmental Club is doing a purchase a tree. It is on our West Orange Board of Ed website. It's five dollars per tree. Their goal is to hit two hundred and fifty or more trees to be planted within the West Orange community. So definitely think about that in terms of helping out the Western High School Environmental Club. And with that, you know, I'll just, you know, echo what my peers have said, Gary and Terry have really said a lot of the words that I was thinking, you know, John, you know, you've always answered a hundred and one questions I have about the budget or about finances and your answers are always like very, very quick and efficient. So I just want to thank you for all the years of service that you've given to the West Orange District. Definitely going to miss you and you know, your knowledge base would definitely be missed. Big shoes to fill there. Ken, you know, I have to say just thank you. Your friendship has meant a lot to me. You know, I'm very fortunate to be able to call you a friend and just the support that you've given to our Board of Education over the years. You know, some tough decisions you had to make and and positions that you were put in. But you definitely helped get this board to gel and move forward. And we've accomplished so much under your leadership, so I just want to thank you for that. And to the community, happy holidays to all of our faculty, such great achievements tonight. And I hope everyone gets some time off to rest and see you back in January.
Thank you very much. Ms. Tannicly?
Thank you, Mr. Alper. To Mr. Calavano, thank you for helping us newbies through our first year of board membership, and we really appreciate your time and answering all of our questions, and we wish you all the best as you begin your retirement and hope that you have some fond memories of us here in West Orange when you're out on your boat. So enjoy your retirement. It's very well deserved and we wish you lots of luck. To Ken, thank you for being a friend and for your leadership over the last year. This has been a heck of a year for all of us. And I don't think we could have had a better leader at our helm for this board as we face some of the challenges that we face this year and your calm demeanor and your constant caring about our district and our students really shows through, and I am grateful for your guidance over the last year, working with you on this board. So thank you so much. And I have a feeling you won't be too far. We'll probably see you in those seats questioning us and holding us accountable. So thank you for everything. Just congratulations to all of our honorees tonight for the Governor's Award. I'm super, super proud of this district and our staff and faculty and everything you bring to your classrooms and to caring for our students. It means so much. And I'm just delighted to be part of part of this district in in such a meaningful way and really respect everything that you do for our students. So thank you and keep up the good work, and we look forward to seeing what you're going to do in 2021 to all of our students who are honored tonight and receive recognitions. Congratulations to all of you. I always think that, you know, when I see some of the things our students are doing, I don't know how I can be more impressed. And then yet another group of students comes out and does something even more fabulous. So this is a great place to be. It's a great place to be educated and congratulations to all of you. We look forward to seeing what you do in the future. I did want to give a brief legislative update as the representative for the Legislative Committee. There were a couple of things I wanted to note that the CUSAC bills for the Assembly forty-nine seventy-five to the Senate thirty-one eighty-seven. This is a bill that was pending and has now been passed in both houses. It's about a high that high performing school districts will be able to get a waiver for not having to do the the CUSAC evaluation this year. So I think it's off to the Governor's Desk for signature now. The next one there that we're watching right now is a cooperative purchasing.
Ms. Tannicly, you made yourself, not sure how you may, you may be leaning on the spacebar.
Yes, I was leaning on the spacebar. So I think it was the Senate, just to review Cooperative Purchasing Bill, Assembly forty-four sixty-one and Senate twenty-six ninety-eight. We're currently watching this one. There's been no action since October twenty-ninth. It's got about twenty-five percent progression, but the idea with this bill is that it would require the state to enter contract and coordinate with certain cooperative purchasing groups for COVID nineteen related products. So hopefully the DOE would lead the coordinate with leading agencies, and then the distribution would be able to be obtained from the agency without going to RFP, which saves a lot of time and effort. So hopefully this one stop shop, but I will keep you posted on that as that one moves through. And then we also have a bill that has gone to second reading in the Assembly. It's about fifty percent progression. It was passed by the Senate. It's an excess surplus bill. It's Senate twenty-six ninety-one and Assembly forty-three ten. And it authorizes school districts to maintain surplus at four percent for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one and then twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school years. So that one we'll watch, we're continuing to watch, and we will let you know about that as it moves. And then to, let's see, on the seventeenth, we have one that was called, so Reserve Funds for COVID Expenses. This is Senate twenty-five oh seven and Assembly forty-one seventy-eight. This particular bill would permit school districts to use funds from capital reserve account and current expense emergency reserve account for certain expenses during state of emergency. So that one passed the Assembly, both houses, and passed the Senate on December seventeenth. And I think there's the key ones that I wanted to share with you all tonight. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, you know, I think Gary really nailed it. Interesting times, right? So, you know, I want to thank each of you for your very kind words, you know, and everybody who spoke earlier as well. You know, of course, I have a little little bit to say. I do want to thank my family, Rhonda and Nathaniel Finn, you know, thank you for putting up with me for the amount of time this has taken. You know, my friends as well for putting up with me through the campaigns and through, you know, various Facebook battles and, you know, everything else we've seen over these past few years. You know, I'm eternally grateful to everyone who lent me their support, their advice and their votes over these years. With your help, I think we were able to really create some meaningful change. You know, no board member can accomplish anything alone, and I don't want to rehash accomplishments because I'm never one to toot my own horn. But, you know, we really got a lot done. You know, I think some of the things I'm most proud of are that we really reconfigured our meetings to make them more productive. We gave student liaisons a seat at the table. We really sidestepped a lot of the leadership challenges that other districts ran into with interns, and I think, you know, we steadily increased student achievement, you know, and we did such a good job implementing remote learning, not that that's the ideal, but we did such a good job with it that the state was holding us up as an example of how if you have to do it, how to do it. So I think there, you know, there's a lot to be proud of here. And, you know, I do feel that I left the place better than I found it, which I feel pretty good about. You know, that's really all you can ask. I've got every confidence that you guys, along with Melinda and the administration, will keep navigating through these tricky waters over these next years. You know, hopefully we'll be back to normal within a year or so, but, you know, who knows, right? But I know that we've got the right people on hand to to get us there. And that you're all going to continue to do what's right for our town and for our students, and that you'll always hopefully remember my mantra about the public service we do and the job that we're elected to do. It's not about us, right? I'll say it again, because I say it a lot. It's it's not about us. If there's one piece of unsolicited advice I can leave all of you with, it's to be the first to volunteer to help and the last to step in front of the camera to take credit. And if I can give you one other piece of advice, and I think Charlene actually said something about this earlier, it's that we're here to serve all of the children of West Orange. You will hear from everyone, and that's how it should be. Every member of the community is a stakeholder in our schools. But at the end of the day, you need to do what's right for our children. And that won't always coincide with what the people in the groups outside the board, those who don't have all the facts that you have, are pressuring you to do. Your independence is required by the Code of Ethics, but when it comes down to it, your integrity is really all you have. Don't give it up. And I've really enjoyed doing this work. I greatly appreciate the opportunity I was given to serve West Orange. I'll always be available to all of you, to the administration, teachers, staff, to anyone else who's interested in and dedicated to our schools. I'll continue to support our teams, our plays, our other student activities. I'll always work for our community and its children, and I look forward to being able to speak again as a member of the public, which I've kind of missed over the past few years. I thank you for having placed your trust in me and for having let me lead and serve as a member of and the president of the West Orange Board of Education. I'll close that to congratulate our staff and our students for their accomplishments. You set the tone. Happy holidays to everyone. Merry Christmas. Happy New Year. Your next board meeting will be held on January seventh at seven thirty PM right here on the internet. And until then, we are adjourned.
Thank you. And this is to inform everyone that when I end the meeting, it'll be those and for those both on and off screen, no other business will be conducted. Thank you. Happy holidays and see y'all next year.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thanks, Lauren.